So, good evening. Thank you all for coming. We're going to start the meeting. So, if those of you, we do have seats available. I can see them from here if you'd like to sit down instead of standing up in the back. I can't, let's see how far I can pull it out here. So, there are some seats available if you'd like to sit instead of standing, and thank you. So, we're going to start this evening. Maybe. We're going to start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Paths and actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land, and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narrative of settler colonialism. The next item is the flag salute. If you'd like to join us, please stand up. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Stillman, before I call roll, I'm just going to turn it over to the city manager to do a report out from closed session.
Yes, I was going to do that after roll call, but would you like to do it now?
Sure. We just have one item to report out for closed session. And I just reported to the council that we settled claim number one with GRS construction for the old Arcata road project for the amount of eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seven and seventy-two, two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-two cents, including the release of the monies that were owed to them for the regular work on the construction contract.
Well, thank you for that. And then we had another item on the agenda. This time we can't report out on it, but eventually it'll happen. We'll go now to roll call, please.
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. Ceremonial matters. We have a proclamation recognizing November 2nd through the 9th, 2025 as California Retired Teachers Week, and Councilmember Schaefer will read that. Thank you.
In recognition of California Retired Teachers Week, November 2nd through 9th, 2025, whereas the California Retired Teachers Association was formed by Laura E. Settle in 1929 at the start of the Great Depression with the goal of relieving the economic hardships suffered by retired teachers, and for 96 years has been a leading advocate for providing teachers with sufficient retirement income. And whereas the California Retired Teachers Association also provides continuing support to active and future teachers, providing grants, scholarships, and donations totaling more than $750,000 a year. And whereas last year our North Coast Division donated $15,125 in local grants and scholarships, including $250 each to three of our local museums and the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And additionally, they volunteered their time in schools, museums, hospitals, the Little Red Schoolhouse, food banks, and other community organizations. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes November 2nd through 9th, 2025 as California Retired Teachers Week in Arcata, and encourages residents to honor all teachers and acknowledge the vital role that teachers fulfill in every community across California. Dated November 5th, 2025, and signed by our mayor Alex Stillman. And we have Abby Puhl, who is our North Coast Division representative, to accept.
That's hopefully a picture of retired teachers. Thank you very much. I'm a member of the board of the local retired teachers association, which is, covers Humboldt County and Delnort County. And as was mentioned, we have a lot of things that are really important to our group. Equitable pensions, social security solvency for teachers, affordable health and long-term care options, and advocating for protecting and fully funding public education. So, we're the voice for retired teachers, but you don't have to be retired to join us, and you don't even have to be a teacher. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next proclamation is recognizing November 2025 as Indigenous Heritage Month, and that'll be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Arcata acknowledges that we live and work upon the ancestral unceded lands of the Wiat peoples known as Gudini, over in the woods, and recognize the vibrant communities of Humboldt County, the Hupac, Karuk, Matol, Tolawa, Walakai, and Yurok, who have cared for the ecosystems of this land since time immemorial. And whereas these indigenous nations maintain an enduring relationship with the lands and waters that have sustained them for countless generations, continuing to uphold sacred responsibilities of stewardship, ceremony, and care despite historic and ongoing attempts at erasure and displacement. And whereas the return of Tolawa Island to the Wiat tribes stands as a powerful example of healing and justice in action, an act of rematriation that honors the resilience of the Wiat people and invites all who live here to repair relationships with the land and its original caretakers. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata does hereby proclaim November as Indigenous Heritage Month, honoring the indigenous peoples of California's northern redwood coast for their immeasurable contributions, ongoing leadership, and unwavering presence. The city of Arcata commits to building meaningful relationships with tribal nations and indigenous-led organizations, and to encouraging all residents, institutions, and partners to take actions that honor indigenous sovereignty and the enduring spirit of this land. And we might have with us Navita Bueno Watts, the Director of Indian Natural Resources Sciences and Engineering Program for Cal Poly Humboldt, and Sashin Shaili Raymond, Coordinator of the Indian Tribal and Educational Personnel Program at Cal Poly Humboldt, are either one of you folks here? Okay, well, we will get this to them, and we will clap for them nonetheless.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is recognizing November 2025 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and that'll be read by Councilmember Matthews.
Whereas hospice of Humboldt has been dedicated to serving those facing terminal illnesses along with their families since 1979, through compassionate, patient-centered care, individuals can live with peace and dignity whether in their own homes or in the Ida Emerson Hospice House surrounded by loved ones. And whereas the essence of hospice and palliative care is meeting patients and families where they are, providing comfort at home and reassurance that choosing hospice or palliative care preserves hope and quality of life. These services address the full scope of physical, emotional, and spiritual needs. Whereas hospice of Humboldt recognizes the growing need for palliative and hospice services in our rural community and remains committed to expanding its programs, ensuring that more individuals and families across Humboldt County can access the care and support they deserve. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that on November 25th, 2025, is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, the council extends its heartfelt thanks to the hospice of Humboldt for its vital role in raising awareness of hospice and palliative care and for providing these invaluable services to our community. Dated November 5th, 2025, signed by Mayor Alex Stillman. And picking this up is Laura Midlamis and Sabrina Delashmott. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Midlamis, and I am here tonight with my fellow board member Sabrina Delashmott. So, thank you, members of the council, Mayor Stillman, staff, and community members. If I may share a few highlights of 2025 with you, there are significant ones that we would like to share briefly with you about hospice of Humboldt. Recently, and significantly, we've been recognized with a five-star Medicare rating. And Sabrina shared with me tonight that's only 10% of hospice receive this kind of rating. It's the highest possible, recognizing quality, honoring our outstanding care, communication, and family support. You mentioned in the proclamation our Ida Emerson House. Well, we are so happy to announce that we're fully utilizing, as of July, all 12 private beds are now open, allowing us to serve twice as many patients and family in need of comfort and peace. And of course, we're preparing for our next big step by expanding our home-based palliative care program to reach even more families and individuals living with serious illness at home. As you know, in Arcata, we have the hospice shop thrift store, and it continues to thrive, generating essential funds for patient care, creating a warm place and welcoming place for volunteers and community members to make a difference. And every day and all day, the members of Hospice for Humboldt and the staff serve nearly 200 patients and countless loved ones, ensuring compassionate care, dignity, peace of mind for people throughout Humboldt County. As we recognize National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, hospice of Humboldt celebrates the compassion, teamwork, and community support that makes this care possible. Together, we are ensuring that every person in Humboldt County has access to comfort, dignity, and peace when it matters most. Thank you for this honor and for recognizing us. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Staff has requested that we remove item under Old Business. It's item A. And it's adopt a resolution number 256-16, a resolution number 256-17, declaring the intent of the city to reimburse for certain water and wastewater systems, capital expenses from proceeds of indebtedness. So, am I reading the wrong one?
You are. So, it's the, it's Old Business number B, please.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we'll do with the other one later. So, I'm going to turn that over to staff, our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, to talk about this item. I'm sorry I got the wrong one.
No, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and members of the public. So, we wanted to make sure that early in the meeting, if anyone was here that was intending to speak to resolution number 256-18, authorizing staff to initiate the Prop 218 process for adjustments to the city's, City of Arcata's water and wastewater rates. Staff is asking that we place a hold and don't have that conversation tonight, but at a future meeting. And there's just a couple reasons that we wanted to make sure that everybody was aware why we're making that recommendation. And probably the first was in response to some feedback that we got from members of the public and even a few members of city council, which is, it's a pretty challenging time for many of our residents and our local families. We hear about SNAP benefits that weren't going to be paid out, and then may be paid out, but maybe late. They may be paid partially. The funding that's in place is probably only a month's worth. We don't know when the federal government will resume operations. We've got WIC benefits that are also at issue. And then there's the whole idea that there's many federal workers who are simply not getting paid right now, and even their jobs may be in limbo. And so, it's not really the optics of bringing forth water and wastewater, especially water increases and changes. We just wanted to kind of pause that and maybe give a little bit of break. The second reason is a little bit better news. We are looking at upwards of a $15 million grant on our wastewater side that we believe that we have a very good chance of receiving. We wanted to get more information on that, and that is not built into our rate model, and it's not built into the financial information that is driving how we're establishing those rates. So, we'd really like to kind of firm up whether or not that's going to happen, because that has a positive effect on the wastewater rates that will offset potentially some of the water rates. So, again, we're asking to pull that item. We will probably not bring it back or ask to bring it back until after the first of the year. Same optics. It doesn't seem like a great thing to do over the holiday season. So, it will have to happen, and we do have to take action on our water fund. But we'd like to ask the council if we could remove that item from the agenda tonight and put it on a future agenda when we have better information.
Thank you. Does council have any comments?
Do you need a motion for that?
You will have to remove it.
Very, okay. So, I will make a motion then to remove item B from Old Business, adopt resolution number 256-18, authorizing staff to initiate the Proposition 218 process for adjustments to the city of Arcata's water and wastewater rates. And thank you so much for all of that.
Is there a second?
I will second, yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
So, thank you for coming if any of you came for this item on the agenda. So, we'll go to the, back to the agenda. Tonight, we do not have a report by commissioner committees. And we have on staff reports, all reports shall be specifically limited to the city business and shall not request or lead to actions by the council at this meeting. A, receive an update from City Manager Merritt Perry regarding the results of the first flash vote survey of the city of Arcata. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stillman. So, I just wanted to spend just a brief amount of time so we could share with the council and the public the results of our first survey. We launched a survey using Flashvote, which is a tool that we really intended to put out there to try to get a broader spectrum of input from the community. We launched our first survey on October 22nd, and really it was kind of an overarching survey of, you know, how's the city doing? Are we on the right track? Are we on the wrong track? What's important to our citizens and what we should be working on with the idea we could drill down into other details and other things later. But it was an important first survey to be able to establish our panel and get people used to the platform. And so, expect other surveys where we're looking for more detailed pertinent information in the future. One of the interesting things, I want to pull that up. There was, there's some coverage in the local press about the city, you know, one of the first questions, like, is the city on the right track, wrong track? How are they doing? And so, I just wanted to speak to that briefly. We had results from previous polls, not a similar survey platform. But in the past, in 2020, January 2020, prior to the pandemic, the city had a, they were, in that poll, it showed the city was doing 55%. And March 2024, that went down to 48%. That was immediately post-pandemic when things were happening that were very challenging for people, whether they were pauses to payments on student loans, whether it was, you know, challenges with healthcare or ending of economic stimulus. That was a difficult time. And what this Flashvote survey showed is that people do think the city, our numbers are getting close to where they were in January of 2020, prior to the pandemic. So, it's just kind of interesting to note, there were some questions about that raised by the press, and we thought it would be interesting to go back and look. Some of the, some of the things that we also saw in the survey, I have Kevin Lyons on board with Flashvote, and he was going to provide a little bit of commentary to the council and to the public so they could look at, how can we look at this? How can we parse the results? But a lot of the priorities for the community seem to be the same as we saw in recent polling prior to the last federal election. And so, I think, you know, we're hearing things in a somewhat consistent manner from the public. And with that, I'll hand it over to Kevin. He has about a 10-minute presentation, and we'll be able to answer any questions that you have after that. So, Kevin, if you want to join us and take it away, that would be great.
Great. Thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and for inviting me this evening. I'm Kevin Lyons. I'm a co-founder of Flashvote and the chief survey nerd, if you'd like. And as Merritt mentioned, got a few, a few things prepared for you here to go over that first survey. And the first survey is always exciting because no one's ever really used it before. It went really well for you guys. You got some really useful results. And the results are there for anyone to see, anyone in the public, anyone in the, on the board, of course, the council. Feel free to poke around yourself. Hopefully, once I walk you through this evening, you'll get some ideas on how you might want to, you know, see how this survey came out, get into the results a little bit, and also future surveys, since they're the same from a functional standpoint. Okay, so, as Merritt mentioned, there was this interesting headline, "Only Half of Residents Think the City's Headed in the Right Direction." And let's just say that was kind of the classic journalist clickbaity kind of thing. Because actually, the real way you set up these surveys and look at that data is the ratio of right direction to wrong track. And so, for you guys, it's about 2.8 to 1, so almost 3 to 1. A little higher even than I think some of those other surveys also that were done scientific sample-wise. So, that's, that's good info. You know, we tend, in government and in business, you tend to hear a lot of complaints. They're amplified. And so, it's always nice to see that little bit of data. And with that, I'll jump actually over to the real survey, so you can see that. Okay, so, to give you a quick overview of the page, one thing to point out here is the filters that we have, so you can play around with those. In particular, the neighborhoods might be interesting, the age and the gender to see differences. But generally, like to start with the locals only. That's the tightest sample of people whose addresses are provided and verified to be within the city boundaries. And that's what I screenshotted for the first thing. So, we looked at the headed in the right direction or things are on the wrong track. That is the first question. We also use this question as a filter for future questions, which is nice. And I'll show you that shortly. So, the question two, if you can see the screen, was what do you think is a strength? And this is where we put in the big, high-level outcomes of people care about physical safety, getting around town, sense of community, condition of streets, sidewalks, trails, cost of availability of housing, local businesses and service, parks and recreation, and then community events, arts and culture. And we ask, what do you think is a strength that gives you a good satisfaction metric? And then we use those same questions, the same choices, in a different question, which is, which of the following aspects are most important to you in Arcata? And what's neat about that, those are both interesting on their own. You can see, you know, what is, what are the most important things for the folks there? And of course, there's some selection of what people choose to move to Arcata for. The magic happens when we combine those on an importance versus satisfaction chart. And now, as Merritt mentioned, we have the fingerprint for Arcata that really sets you on a to-do list, potentially. And what you want to look for there is what are the things that are high importance, low satisfaction? So, those are things where, page up a little bit, where the important score is a lot higher. A lot more people rated it as important than rated it as a strength. And so, that tells you, that distance from the line actually tells you that that's something that you might benefit from a little extra attention. Besides the housing, the streets and sidewalks, and the physical safety jump out as interesting topics that we could drill down into with a future survey, as was mentioned. I'll come back to that shortly, actually. Also up here, by the way, where you have a lower importance but higher satisfaction, these are some things where you could potentially, if you needed to, you know, reallocate some of the resources from the ones up here to the ones down here, and get more community value out of the resources that you have entrusted to you. Okay, so after that, we had a question where the idea was, what are these more specific things would you want the city to prioritize? And you'll notice we can choose up to four out of the eight. You can't choose them all. And out of that, you'll always look for the things that are over 50%. So, that would be homelessness impacts, enforcing some codes, attracting more local jobs and opportunities, and then aging critical infrastructure, so pipes and roads. So, that would be your priorities there, where you do have a majority of people. Real quick, I'll go back up. Oh, sorry, the last question, actually. This is our, this is our comment question. You're really looking for things that might be useful there. No guarantees, but there's always some, some things in there that are interesting. And compared to meetings in general, I speak as a public official also, sometimes it's fun to see people just come show up and say nice things. And so, the word cloud is clickable, and also on the other questions where we have other, you can expand those and read through those if you'd like, too. Okay. So, going back to the slides, it was already mentioned that basically your right to wrong is, is in line with the previous surveys. And the geography and other filters are yours to just play around with. It's a simple dropdown. You will see some differences by area. Just keep in mind that those samples are smaller than the overall sample. The overall sample is a good plus or minus 6% sample. These other ones, when they get smaller, might be more like 10 or plus or minus 10 or plus minus 15. So, you don't want to, don't want to take anything, assume anything out of real small sample differences, perhaps. The last thing I want to mention is the sort by Q1 responses. So, we can, we can look at how the people who said, hey, we're on the right direction versus, hey, we're on the wrong track, where do they differ? And the one that jumps out the most, where the wrong track people have placed higher importance, is physical safety and security. And if I go back to the survey, the very bottom here, there's a link you can click on called Additional Survey Reports. You can click on that. You can see this Q1, the question one cross-tab. And that's where we can actually not only look at the individual questions, like the strength or most important, as we just saw, and you can deselect any of these if you want to clean up the graph. You can actually see them all together. And so, when we think about what are the most interesting surveys to dial into, well, here's one where the folks who are giving essentially the lower rating, for them, physical safety and security. So, if there was a number one survey to do next, that would be the topic. If there was a number two or three, we're there with the housing and the streets and sidewalks as being furthest away from the line for the people who are kind of on the least satisfied. And those are the ones where the needle's easiest to move. So, closing out with that and returning to the slides, that would be something to think about for future surveys. Overall, good scores, a lot of things above the line. And of course, I'll take any questions. Ask me anything now or later. My email is here if that's helpful. Okay.
Thank you very much. And does the council have any questions you'd like to ask? Well, I would hope that more people will sign up for Flashvote. I thought it was a good representation that we had 305 people show up for it. And it's definitely easy to sign up, and it would be good for everyone that has an opportunity to do that so that you can, I think we can have 10 or 12 flash votes a year. I can't remember if it's a 10 or 12. And I don't know what all the questions will be, but it would be good to have everyone signed up to do that, that lives in Arcata. So, thank you. So, would you like to conclude with anything else?
No, I think that's it. Thanks, Kevin, for being on, and look forward to those future surveys.
Thanks very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have other staff reports this evening?
Yeah, I had a few things I just wanted to report from my city manager's report. There's a few things. One of them is I met with the downtown businesses group last Wednesday, and there was a number of things that we talked about. But one of the ones that really stands out is, again, the city council made a contribution to Humboldt Made, and I would urge the public to look into the future for some announcements from them. But they will be taking a regional approach to cooperation between local governments and Humboldt Business Associations and support organizations to promote our local businesses. So, they have three campaigns they're going to be rolling out over time. And so, there will be a good opportunity to get involved with that, and there's going to be a lot of press on that. So, look for that. Get involved. There's an email signup for Choose Humboldt that if you Google Humboldt Made or search Humboldt Made, Choose Humboldt, you can, you can be notified. But there's, there's going to be some fun activities to participate in there. Another one along the lines of businesses, the mayor and vice mayor will be asked to select a business of the year in the near future. So, if you have ideas for businesses that should be recognized, please email our mayor and vice mayor and give them any input that you may have so they can, to help them in making that decision. And then lastly, we, our city engineer and environmental services director coordinated a tabletop exercise simulating a 7.1 earthquake and a tsunami, not unlike some of the recent scares that we have had. We saw a real need to drill into our emergency operation plans and really tighten things up in the event that we do have a real emergency. And so, it was great. We had members from Humboldt County, came the Humboldt County OES, and they shared with us how they react and the things they need and the ways we could coordinate with them. They also highlighted critical lifelines and what we should be thinking about being able to serve the public as critical lifelines, whether that be food or utilities or transportation, a number of different items. So, that'll be a new approach that we ultimately end up incorporating into our emergency operation plan. I would also like to thank Cal Poly Humboldt. They sent, they have a well-versed staff with their emergency operations team. And they actually, Chris Casera with Cal Poly, she, she organized and led the tabletop exercise. And I know we came away with a few page of notes, things to do, contacts and coordination. So, a lot of updates to our emergency operation plans, a better understanding of our roles and responsibilities during an emergency. And so, it's, sometimes these things seem far away and out of sight, out of mind, but it's important to drill on them before you're in the actual emergency to really ensure the city has the best response that we had. So, we will be having more updates. We'll be having additional trainings, really to make that more of a kind of muscle memory for our staff. And I think we're doing a great job, but I think there's always, we can always do a better job. So, we're continuing to train and work on that. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to speak to this?
I just wanted to say that today is World Tsunami National Awareness Day, so.
We didn't have a proclamation on that. So we'll go on to oral community, oral and written communications, early time limited. The city council values your comments and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. The early section of the public comment is limited to 15 minutes and the speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of your time for your public comment, this item is continued at the end of the meeting under item 12, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. There will also be a time to provide general public specifics to each item when that item is being reviewed by the council. So I'm going to open oral communications and the first person, please come forward.
And really don't want to be the first person, but I'm curious if the legal counsel for the city is present on Zoom or anything? Because oftentimes that is announced. So if legal counsel is here, I would just like to know that.
Thank you. And they are. Next speaker, please. Well, you have numbers.
I, I see a few folks in the audience with those cards. So if you do have a, a green card, one through four, you should probably get in line for that. And then the yellow cards, one through four are the second. And it seems like we have plenty of people here to fill that first 15 minutes of in-person comment.
Please go ahead.
Good evening. I, I speak with the greatest respect for the work you do and also an awareness that you have limited bandwidth with your time, with your time together. The flash vote was actually a good segue to what I wanted to say, which is that it's very important that you focus on the things that you have an ability to impact and that make the biggest difference to the people that live in Arcata. I think it's easy sometimes to get distracted with far flung crises of which there is no shortage around the world. But when you look at the flash vote and the results of it, there's a lot of problems in Arcata that we need your help focusing on from housing to healthcare, sea level rise, homelessness, there's a lot here. And I'm just asking that you keep in mind that that should really be your priority. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Melanie Bettenhausen. The Friends of Grotzman Creek Watershed is requesting time on the agenda at the earliest possible date to inform the council about the impacts of a 20-story mega cell tower proposed for 422 Shirley Boulevard in the Sunny Bay area. Time is of the essence as the county has sent the conditional use permit application out for referral. And while the project is located on a county parcel, it is on, it is, and is not on city property, the project is only 180 feet from city homes. The city's ordinance requires cell towers to have a thousand foot distance from residences, but the county only requires a couple of hundred feet, leaving city residences unprotected by city ordinances. The site is in the Arcata Community Planning Area within the city's sphere of influence and is in the Local Agency Formation Commission area. The city has an obligation to weigh in on this project. Arcata Fire would be the responding party in the event of combustion at the site due to faulty wiring, storms, earthquake, et cetera. This is a risk to Arcata's stretched resources. The tower would be cited in a high wildfire risk area. Construction operation and stored propane may increase ignition risk. Nearby residents could face increased insurance premiums or even policy denial. This area has a history associated with flooding as well as landslides. Negative impacts to the watershed inordinately affect the city of Arcata, especially the potential flooding that could occur on Beverly as a result. Please consider placing this item on the agenda in the near future. The city council needs to be able to consider the information and its response to the county as soon as possible. And we have something to submit digitally with maps and more information that will help you write that proposal to get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I've encouraged people to get in touch with their supervisor, Mike Wilson, which represents our issue, our area on this issue. And also John Ford, who is the head of the Department of Planning for the county. And I think that's where we're going to have to make a statement. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Margaret Draper and I'm a lawyer, a resident, a taxpayer. I do everything in Arcata. And I am a resident on Shirley Boulevard. And I wanted to start off briefly by, is it two minutes or three minutes? Okay. The, the reason why we want the city to comment on this, even though it is a county matter, the property is on the county, but the entire situation, as the person behind me will explain, is all around it is city. And there are many ways in which this project affects the city residents negatively. The site is in the Arcata Community Planning Area, it's in the sphere of influence, it's adjacent to property designated as a, as a city natural area. And we also believe that the city of Arcata should have been contacted regarding citing of this, of this major cell infrastructure. Possibly you guys could have made money off a lease by leasing land that would have benefited the city. And it would have also removed this, this economic burden on these 120 houses that are just jammed up against this thing. And one of the, there are many environmental effects. And we were just talking about the water, the sewer expense, you know, water and wastewater. We actually have Grotzman Creek there and it's got a perennial stream right next to the project. It could affect the flooding of, of the Beverly Court and Beverly Drive. Arcata Fire would be responding if there was an issue with regard to, regard to fire. And we believe that there are uses for the land that would be more beneficial. We want to try to work with the landowner to donate this property to the city of Arcata.
So thank you very much. Speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Tim Judkins. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk to you for a minute. I'm also here about the cell tower. I really hope that we can get that on the city's agenda. It's, it's a very unique thing. I think this might be helpful. I just did a graphic so you can see the peculiarity of where this cell tower is going. As you can see, this is the, this is the Humboldt County line with Arcata. And a piece of property comes deep into Arcata and then goes back out. It's like a loop. And it, these represent the houses that are all in Arcata. Maybe one or two houses are actually on Humboldt County land. So this, this is not going to impact the county, it's going to impact the people, both definitely around this site, but also the people downhill who are going to potentially be affected by fire or erosion. This cell tower is also unique. It's, I like to think of it as a data center. It's Arcata's first data center. This is not a regular cell tower. This cell tower is being designed to transmit live streaming into every home in the area. It is going to be beaming a bandwidth that is really unheard of around here. So, and it's going to make noise and it's going to be, there's going to be traffic to support it. So we've seen the gaslighting that has happened around other data centers throughout the country. This is our own personal data center. And we really need to be on top of it, I think, in both in, in political terms and legal terms, administrative terms, because it is a potential calamity for all of us. This tower is going to be 200 feet tall. Hundreds, if not thousands of cubic yards of asphalt and concrete are going to go into a giant hole to make a giant skyscraper. We're going to clear cut a forest to do that.
Thank you very much. And thank you, maybe you want to leave your map. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Sean, I'm with the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition. And we are still watching a genocide in Gaza. Children are still dying in Gaza. And many of our voters still want the council to act to become a sister city with Gaza City, as I do. And if there is going to be a policy on sister cities generally, then let's engage. Please engage with the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition. We are perhaps the biggest stakeholder in that proposal. So let's, let's talk about it. Let's ensure that any policy on a sister city does not exclude any city on the planet from being a sister city if they want to be a sister city with us, especially if they are in a vulnerable place, vulnerable country. Gaza City wants to be a sister city with Arcata, they have told us this. This is cause, I think, should be for being humble. That while they are being bombed by a hostile force during a ceasefire, they are still committed to being a sister city with Arcata, California. We've just completed a fundraiser for $9,000 towards distributing water in Gaza City. This is something that they're doing right now. This can save lives, just, just what we're doing already. And we hope that we can become a established sister city. We think that it is not immoral or illegal or anything. And, and we can do this and it can be a beautiful thing for Arcata.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi there, my name is Pat Kessler, I'm a member of Jewish Voices for Peace, Veterans for Peace, Physicians for a National Health Program and CNA. And there are a couple of things I want to address, but I know one of them is on the agenda, so I want to address that. But I am aware that the city manager wishes to draft a policy for sister cities and not include Gaza. For the manager said, I don't believe the city is interested in pursuing a sister city with Gaza. And he's been saying that to the press, which is not true. There is a wide interest in the sister city with Gaza. And there are two on the city council who do approve of it when he said they were not. Secondly, if a policy is made, it should be all encompassing on a case by case basis. Please don't exclude Gaza. I read a communication where someone said, well, this little tiny thing isn't going to help. If every city that we can think of in this country would be a sister city with Gaza, we could help them a lot more. Because there are a majority of people in this country who do want to stop weapons to Israel, who do want to ceasefire and want to help Gaza. And our leaders are not listening to us. Why are you not listening? The majority of us do want that. We want to help Gaza. So anyway, if a policy is made, it should include Redwood Peace and Justice and any others in the public arena that are interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Mike, I live in Bayside and I've never done this before, I don't understand the decorum, so if I make mistakes, I apologize. So on Highland Road, if you're familiar with Highland Road near Jacobi Creek School, the road connects up to Golf Course Road. And it's a wonderful place to be, it's super walkable, it's super bikeable, there's kids going up and down the road all the time because there's a couple of schools down there. And a few weeks ago, somebody put a fence up that blocks that pedestrian access, which overnight sort of shattered the walkability of, you know, the Bayside community that connects over to the Golf Course Road community. And I don't know how that's even allowed. It's been in use for decades, there's a bunch of people here who grew up on the hill, who have been using this, this road to walk around the community. And now there's a big old wall, we have enough walls in this world. So what I'm hoping for is that the council can maybe put this on an agenda, sort of look into how to restore that walkability for pedestrian safety for the kids who walk to Jacobi Creek School. Now they're going to go down Golf Course Road, which is like a blind turn, like it's super sketch. So you probably have some increased motorized traffic, you have, basically have way less pedestrian safety. And yeah, so that's my hope is that you could direct staff to kind of look into how we could keep that walkability intact as it has been for decades. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
So we're at 15 minutes.
I'm sorry?
We're at 15 minutes.
15? Let's take our, I know these two speakers are going to be talking about Highland Road, so we'll take these two speakers on that issue.
Yeah. I'm here to, to speak in support of what Mike just said. I also, I've lived on Highland for 34 years. And this fence that suddenly went up destroys the connection between two neighborhoods, Highland Street and Golf Course. If there were an emergency like an earthquake or tsunami and old Arcata Road became impassable, this would be our way out of the neighborhood. So the fence has essentially made it impossible for us to escape from Highland Street if, if that were to occur. We think that we have a right to walk through there. The person who owns the property, it isn't clear that he even has a right to have a fence there. So please do find a way to investigate this and establish our right to walk through to Golf Course Road. We used to have traffic of, you know, children and women with baby carriages up and down Highland Street. And this, this is over now. He's cut the link between two of Arcata's neighborhoods. So I need your help in, in straightening this thing out.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker, and then we'll be finished with oral communications.
So I'm Jude Power. I've lived on Highland Street for 32 years. And I think it's important, we, we believe we very likely have a prescriptive right of way. It's a passage that's been used for decades and decades, generations. The entire time I've lived there, people have been walking, including me. But it's important to realize this passage isn't just one spot, it's a huge three mile loop. And virtually every day when I look out my window, every time I look out, I would see people walking down Highland Street, lots of dog walkers, lots of groups of two or three talking, children on their way to school. The minute that the fence was installed, it completely dried up. So these are people that are doing, many, most of them, I think, this three mile health loop, it's a good loop, good length, it's got some elevation gain and loss. It's, it includes all of Sunny Bray, people use it, all the people out Buttermilk, people on Upper Golf Course, people along Old Arcata Road, the apartments at the Buttermilk Roundabout. These are all people who live on this loop and walk through this constantly from mid morning to mid afternoon. Now there are zero people walking through there. And they're being forced to walk on this blind curve with no shoulders. So they would take this Highland Street as a safety issue, but also because it's much more pleasant to walk down. So I just want you to be aware, there, there are lots of people using this passage over many decades. And it has stopped cold. I look out my window all during the day, no people walking down. So that says to me, that's who these people were, they were Buttermilk Lane, Sunny Bray, all of them. It's tying the communities, the sub communities of Arcata together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that's the end of our oral communications and we will go on to our consent calendar. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members can request that an item be removed for a separate discussion. And members of the public may comment on any item remaining on the consent calendar in the comment period before the vote. A, approve, approval of waived reading of the text and consent to read by title only of any ordinance on this agenda. B, approve the minutes of the city council special meeting, October 15th, 2025. C, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of October 15th, 2025. D, bi-weekly report on disbursements. E has been removed from the consent calendar. F, approves the purchase of five 20, 2026 hybrid Forest Mavericks for the city fleet and awarded contract to Harper Motors in the amount of 1,500, 1,85,240 dollars and 30 cents, including tax, and authorize the city manager execute all applicable documents. G, approve the appointment of retired, I'm sorry, rehired senior planner, Delo Fritas at the salary range of M152 at step six. H, approve the purchase of four used Ford police interceptor vehicle, utility vehicles from Bear utility vehicles from Bear River Rancheria for the total of $180,000 and authorize an additional $20,000 for associated setup costs and approve the necessary and associated related actions. And that is the last item on the consent calendar. Are there any, is there anyone on the council that wants to remove an item?
Why is E being removed? Is that because this is?
No, we're hoping that E is acted on with the consent calendar. I'm not, I'm not sure, Mayor Stillman, if you, could you just clarify? I don't think there was any intention to postpone E. That's a change to the hourly resolution for pay to comply with minimum wage laws.
Oh, it doesn't, for Delo Fritus?
No, no, E.
Oh, for which?
E.
B?
That should be part of.
E is an Edgar.
Staffer requests to keep that on the consent calendar.
I'm going to add E, adopt resolution 256-13, amending the class and pay, resolution compensation and benefits for hourly rate, part-time, temporary and seasonal personnel, and authorize the city manager execute all applicable documents. Is there anything we'd like to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a vote? Well, is, pardon me, you move, public comment on this?
Hello, my name's Joanna Gary. I'm using this hearing device. And just a reminder, please people, if you could speak up, because I'm the only one who has the hearing device that the city owns. And there may be other people here who can't hear if you don't speak loud enough into the mic. So I wanted to speak about how interesting it is that we talk about the cost of a vehicle, but we just refer to a salary range of a hired person. And is there some sort of policy that you cannot actually say the amount of that salary range in a meeting like this? And so that was just interesting because I'm always interested in what things cost, including the people who work for the city. So especially because retirement and the whole issues involving that, I just wanted to ask the question, even though you may not be able to answer it right now. It's really interesting how we have a lot of dollar amounts on some things and we don't know specifics on other things.
Mayor Stillman, if I could just clarify for the public that all of our salary schedules are posted on the city's website and they're very transparent. That's a requirement law, so we, they're all posted.
Were you able to hear that?
No.
All of our salary schedules and steps are online. They're published on the city website.
You heard that? Thank you. Is any, anyone else that would like to comment on the consent calendar? Okay, can we move it to the council for approval?
I will make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to old business. And A, as adopt resolution number 256-16, a resolution number 256-17 declaring the intent for the city of Arcata to be reimbursed for certain water and wastewater system capital expenses from the proceeds of indebtedness. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tabitha Miller, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director. And the city engineer and I are going to walk through kind of two aspects of the reimbursement resolutions that we're asking you for approval for tonight. I'm going to go through the logistics and our city engineer will actually walk you through the projects and answer any questions you might have on those. So this is one of those kind of perfunctory tasks that we have to take and it gives us some flexibility. It's also required by the IRS. But what we're asking you to do in these two separate resolutions, 256-16 and 256-17, is simply to declare the intent of the city to reimburse itself from future tax exempt debt for certain water and wastewater capital project expenses. And these are capital project expenses that are associated with the potential water and wastewater rate changes. And what we're trying to do is really protect your flexibility and your rights going forward. So you're not actually forced to take any action. All you're simply doing tonight is making sure that we have the ability, if we actually issue tax exempt debt at a future time, to reimburse ourselves for costs that we're incurring up to 60 days ago through up to 18 months to three years after the project had, the expense has been made. Again, it does not mean that you have to issue tax exempt financing. You may choose to do something else. It also gives you some flexibility as to when you issue debt, if you choose to. And that's really important because you can consolidate projects, which will save you on debt service issuance costs. So it's in our best favor. It may also be something that you choose to look at the market as far as interest rates. And there may be times that are more, you know, beneficial to the city than others to issue debt. So we really want to get this in place, no matter when the projects happen and/or when the rate potential changes because it will, like I said, protect us going forward and give us more flexibility. The kind of leading into this need for infrastructure that we've talked about, and this is really, it's these capital needs that we're talking about potentially financing that have sort of driven some of our needs as far as big investments in both water and wastewater capital infrastructure. And this is just a, you know, 30 plus year history from your financial statements of your net asset value for your, for your assets. And you can take a look at the left-hand side and that's 1991. We did about $2.5 million in investments for over about a three-year period. You can see the increase in the graph. Let me see if I can use my pointer here to go up. And then it leveled off. And what happens in our net asset value is that you're doing two things. You, when you build an asset or you purchase an asset, you place it at historic cost, whatever you paid for it on your financial statements. And then what you do is you take that asset, you figure out what the useful life of it is, and you expense it or reduce it, depreciate it over that useful life. Much of your infrastructure for water and wastewater can have up to a 30-year useful life. And so you're going to depreciate at that historic value. And what happens is if you're keeping up with at least spending as much as you're depreciating, you'll have like a flat level period, which you had here for about 10 years until the early 2000s. When you stop putting new dollars in or you stop investing, you're going to, you're going to see definitely a drop. And that's really important because remember that you're depreciating at historical cost, but you're adding at your current cost. So you should over time be seeing an increase in your asset value if you're doing regular investment. We certainly had a drop off where we really saw that your, your net assets in your water fund dropped to about $4 million. That continued, you really, there's very little increase until the last couple of years. And in '23 and '24, we started, we put some money into the Tank 1C, our new water tank that just went online this last year. We started investing in the Steel Water Line project. And if we actually put this graph out two more years, the current year that we just finished and that the year we're in, you would see a continued increase in investment. But it just kind of shows you where we had that lull of not really reinvesting in our system that's creating some of the need that we have now. Before I move to the next slide, I kind of want to point out on the left-hand side, the values that we're talking about. You'll notice that it starts at $1 million and goes to $7 million. So that's the scale of your assets in your water fund. And when we switch to our wastewater fund, you're going to see a very similar picture where we did very little increase in value. You know, we really weren't investing at the level we needed to. We did start a few years earlier investing in the wastewater fund. And a lot of this is driven by the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, upgrade project and some other projects. And again, if you add two more years, you'd see that continued spike in investments. But I also point out that the scale on the left-hand side is quite a bit different. The last one went from $1 million to $7 million. This starts at $10 million and goes to $60 million. So when you take a look at this big increase over here, that three-year increase is actually about $32.3 million of value that you've added. So you've certainly started investing in your wastewater fund. It's also part of the reason that the rates are a little bit more stable, the grants, some of those things. But I just kind of wanted to show you the history of sort of where we flattened out in making those long-term investments. And that's really kind of why we're talking about the things that we've been talking about over the last year. And with that, I'm going to let our city engineer talk about.
Good evening, council, and good evening, members of the public here. Since we are talking about water and wastewater, I think this is a good time to just give you a quick update on the CIP projects. Not only CIP project we work on, but beyond that, our staff work on waterline projects, like a small projects where staff spend time on repair works also. So I'll be focusing just on the CIP projects. The three projects I'll be discussing on the water side are the projects. They were included in our initial rate study that was done in 2020. So our first project is Steel Waterline Replacement Project. Early this year, we gave you a quick update on the project and what we plan to do that, do with the project. Approximate cost of this project is $12 million. We started this project summer of 2025. And at this point, we are almost done with 8% of the work and we are on schedule to complete the project by end of next year. I think picture says a lot of words, so you can see a lot of work happening. As a part of the project, we are replacing our old steel waterline AC pipes and the old meters. So in the picture, you will see our smart meters or the remote read meters and the replacement of waterline. Again, a few more pictures from Steel Waterline Replacement Project. Next project is Plunkett Waterline Project. This was also initially was in the 2020 rate study. When we did the rate study, this was one of the capital project in that period. This project right now is completed and the total cost of the project was $1.4 million. Out of that, 75% was funded by Caloia. So we have 75% funded by Caloia and 25% by the city fund. So this project is complete and we are done with this project. And as our finance director earlier mentioned, Tank 1C, this was also was on our 2020 rate study capital project and now this project is complete. The key point here is in, when we did the rate study in 2020, all these projects were on the list. However, the cost of waterline project in the rate study was $5 million. And out of that, we were planning to get $2.5 million through grant, which we did not get. And the cost of the project came out to be $12 million. So we didn't have enough funds, so that's why the graph is like that and we don't have a lot of investment in the waterline project. Similarly, Plunkett Waterline Project was, in the rate study, was for $2.2 million. We came a little bit shy, but we completed the project with 1.4, which is a good thing. However, on Tank 1C, the initial estimate of the project was 2.2. And when we completed the project, it was at $3.3 million. So, and also we got a little bit fortunate on this project. We got a little bit funding through IIG and remainder fund was all from the waterfront. So we have now three big assets in last three years. And beyond that, as I said, we have, our staff have worked on replacing and maintaining other water infrastructure, which is not listed here, but we are working on those as well. So what is that we are working right now and for the future? Currently, we are working on our Tank 4 rehabilitation project, which we plan to work in next two or three years. We are in short of water storage for our fire demand. So we need to add more water storage tank in our system. So in next three to five years, we plan to add one more 1 million gallon water tank in our system somewhere in Sunny Bray area. And again, as we are not doing a lot of investment in our waterline project, we plan to do one more waterline project in next five years, which again, the cost of that project will be in the range of 14 to 15 million dollars. So I'm going to pause here on all the water projects. If you have any specific questions, please feel free to ask. If not, I'm just going to move to wastewater. Okay, moving forward. Wastewater project, as we've been talking about, our Phase 1 wastewater improvement project, we gave you an update early this year on the project. We started this project three years ago and right now we are 95% complete. Right now, we are on schedule to complete the project by, for the contractor by February of 2026. However, because there's a winter and there's some work like paving and moving of the large stockpile will take a long time. So we are anticipating our 100% project completion will be done by June of 2026. Again, this was one of the project that was listed in our 2020 rate study. These are the few pictures from our wastewater, new pumps, new electrical building, new headworks. Lot of excitement at our core P R on this project and everybody's very excited that project is almost completed. As we are talking about the wastewater project, the other project which was listed in our 2020 rate study was levy augmentation or levy improvement around the wastewater. As we knew we were going to invest around $50 to $60 million at our wastewater site, we had to protect that asset. So for that, we had that project to improve the levy around the wastewater. Currently, we are, we have completed environmental phase of the levy project and we are planning to do construction in next three to five years. At the same time, you know, I think this is not currently, we are currently working on long-range feasibility plan for the Phase 2 or the whatever happens for the wastewater plant project. And on that project, hopefully January of 2026, our project team will come and give you an update on the project. We cannot skip civil lateral program and our inflow infiltration when we are talking about the wastewater. Inflow and infiltration, I think, you know, over the years, we have talked about. Inflow is the water that comes to the roof rains and from the yard to our sewer system. And infiltration is the groundwater coming in our system. We have upgraded our wastewater treatment plant and we don't want to treat the rainwater. So it's key to reduce the inflow and infiltration in our system. Because of that, 10 years ago, we have, we had a civil lateral replacement program in place. Since the inception of that program, we have replaced 1,000 civil laterals in the system. So which is very good, which means that we have reduced the inflow and infiltration to in our system and that reduces the amount of water that, or wastewater that goes to our treatment plant and we have to treat. One of the INI project we completed was in 2018. And due to that project, we were able to reduce the infiltration to our system by half a million gallon in the wet season only. And in future, we, currently, we are working in our next INI project, which we plan to do, begin the construction in 2026. Our finance director earlier mentioned that we are in a very good position to get grant for that. The estimate of that project is $15 million and we are hoping to start that project summer of 2026. And as I said, similar to the wastewater project, there are other projects that we do, which is not in the capital, but we do other improvements like manhole rehabilitation project, replacement of the sewer line, small section that is done by the city crew or the small contract. So, but they are done, they are not listed on the CIP project, but we are annually maintaining those also as a part of the, not the CIP project, but as a part of a maintenance program. The other project that we are working currently is a First Street Lift Station, which is at the G Street next to the Rotary Park. That intakes lots of sewer from the Sunny Bray area. And when there's a lot of rain, it's overwhelmed. So we are trying to replace the pumps in that area. So with that, I'm going to stop and take any question that you may have on our water or wastewater project that we are working on.
Thank you. Bringing that back to the council, do you have questions, anybody? None? Don't see anyone with questions. So, good presentation then.
I just had a quick question. So the 1,000 that we did, when, what year did that start?
Can you repeat that question, sorry?
So the 1,000 that we have already done, when did that begin?
Oh, the civil lateral.
In 2014.
Okay, thank you.
13, 14, yes.
Is there another question? Okay, what is the pleasure? Yes, anyone out there, oh, would like to speak on this item? Thank you.
Good evening, Gregory Taggart. In the introduction of the staff report, it's like the third sentence down. It says, "The wastewater system improvements include levy projects to protect the wastewater treatment plant from sea level rise." I have a question about this because I'm not aware that you can do anything to the levies at this time. You definitely got a Coastal Commission ruling on this during the Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment plant, which you guys approved, but the council never read what the Coastal Commission said. And the Coastal Commission said, there was a separate letter from Karen Deemer, former manager, and it denied anything with the levy improvement. So I'm just kind of like shocked because you have like $51.4 million that you have for wastewater capital improvements. And I would like to know the details of, you know, how much of this is going to levy improvements and how much is? and how much is other, because you don't have permission to do any levy improvements. And they definitely was a hard no. So maybe you think you're going to talk your way, you know, into this, where are you going to get this? But I mean, I'm just surprised that, you know, we got a staff, we have to report PowerPoint on this. And there was a lot of photos from the standpoint of what we needed to do with our waterline replacement and showing things blown up on the streets and court, right here on Seventh Street behind City Hall. But I never saw any presentation that for levy improvements that were part of this. And I'd like to bring up again that it was mentioned about SNAP, but it's much more than just SNAP. It's like next month, it's Obamacare, everyone's losing their subsidies on that. Then it's going to be the midterms where Medi-Cal, a lot of people are going to be losing their benefits there. And then, you know, from the senior citizen standpoint, 44% of seniors on social security do not have any savings and they don't have any assets. So that's your public out there. So I would really recommend you focusing on the water replacement job, which is like, what, 30 some, 30 some million and not get into, you know, what the public cannot afford at this point. I'd also bring up the fact that what happened to the 40% increase in 2020 to 24? What was the projects that were supposed to be done and how was the money spent? And I know that not all the money was spent for those projects how it was intended, because at some point you spent it on, you know, your pension, 3 million went over to that. So there needs to be a lot more clarity in it. I emailed you all this in a lot more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? No one, I don't see anyone. May we have a motion?
I would like to ask, just ask a question before we do the motion. For our own edification, could you answer the, you know, the question regarding the levy project portion, not how much? I'm not interested in how much are we spending on it. I know most of this is grant related, but I'm more interested to confirm that we are not simply thumbing our noses at the coastal commission or planning to talk our way out of anything.
I'll try to answer some of the questions. So just to maybe clarify, the total cost of the project for the wastewater is 67 million dollars. And that does not include any of the levy improvement. That's just a pure wastewater project, total project cost. I can give you a bit more breakdown of that if you're interested, but that's the project cost. Levy is a completely separate project. We are still in, as I said, we are in the very much environmental phase of the project for the levy improvement. We will be consulting with coastal commission and our project team will be talking to them before we move to any next phase. Right now, we have just completed environmental phase and not started any of the further work on that one. And that is also funded by Calo E S. Again, 75% by Calo E S and 25% by wastewater fund.
Right, so you will be working and are working with the coastal commission on this.
We will be definitely, we cannot do any work without their approval on that. And when I said earlier, in January of 2026, we will be giving you an update on our long range planning. At that presentation, we'll be talking more about the living improvement and other potential projects in the near future.
All right, thank you. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 256-16, declaring the intent of the city of Arcata to be reimbursed for certain water system capital expenses from the proceeds of indebtedness and adopt resolution number 256-17, declaring the intent of the city of Arcata to be reimbursed for certain wastewater system capital expenses from the proceeds of indebtedness.
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion from the council? All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So the next item on our agenda was removed and so we'll go on to new business. A, approve the use of up to $371,717... $371,717 of opioid settlement funds to serve unsheltered and substance use disorder, S U D, impact individuals, providing temporary shelter and wraparound services. We have a staff report on that, please.
Excuse me. So we're going to do a brief staff report on just kind of an overview of the opioid funds. And then we'll actually ask the organizations that presented the proposals that are included in the staff report to actually present their information. They're much, much more adept at that. So just kind of quickly, a little bit of history on where these funds came from and why. So in 2122, national litigation settlements with several of the opioid manufacturers, distributors and retailers were made and as part of that, those funds were passed through to state and local governments. This is kind of known globally as the California statewide opioid settlements. The direct funding to state and participating local governments is really remediation for the impacts of the opioid misuse and addiction. And it's currently administered by the California Department of Healthcare Services. And the current payments are scheduled through 2038. So this is sort of a long-term funding source. To date, looking at what the city of Arcata has, we have received $491,733. And this, we, this week received a small payment from Walmart for $1,262. This number also includes interest that we've earned on those funds that we've received. When we look at the projected future payments through 2038 that are being projected out by the settlements and provided to us, we expect an additional about $988,000 or just under a million dollars. And I will say that those funds, there's more in the beginning and less at the end. So the next five, four or five years, we get about $100,000 per year and then it kind of dwindles down from there. Those include a number of companies that have already made those settlements and arranged for payments. And there's a list right there, Mallencroft, Endo, distributors, Tiva, Allergen, C V S, Walgreens, Walmart and Kruger. I think it is important to note that these numbers do not, do not include any current litigation or any future litigation that we might join. So there is the possibility for additional funds. And the one that I would point out that probably has some bigger impacts when it comes due is Purdue. And the Sacklers actually came to a settlement back in June, at the end of June of 2025. Those settlement amounts are, have been posted, but the distribution to the local entities has not been provided. And part of that's because the state numbers are just good through June 30th. So that wasn't, it wasn't known yet, there was still the ability to join that particular settlement. So those are funds that we will likely see at the beginning of this next calendar year. And so the projections here may change, but I can't tell you what that means or how they will be impacted. Just before we get into the proposals from the two organizations that have projects to bring forward to you, I wanted to give kind of an overview. There's an 18-page document that's put out as to how we can use these funds. This just happens to be the California High Impact Abatement Activities Chart for the high priorities. So those areas where they really want to spend at least 50% of the funds and it's where the state has identified the most bang for their buck and where they really feel like we should be focusing on. Some of these are a little bit harder for us, even with the dollars we have. It's going to be hard for us to invest in the infrastructure for facilities for substance use disorder. It's hard for us to create treatment infrastructure. Number three is really what we're focusing on. And those two proposals that we're talking about tonight really are about addressing the needs of communities of color and vulnerable populations, including sheltered and unsheltered homeless populations that are disproportionately unpacked by S U D, which is substance use disorder. And so that's really where we're focusing, the dollars we're asking you for currently. You will see number five is intervention to prevent drug addiction in vulnerable youths. We would like to focus some of those dollars at sometime in the near future on education in our school system to address number five. And the number six, the Naloxone, has really been widespread and the county has been able to make this available. So we don't feel like there's a need now, but that's another area that is an easy one to use for your funds. And before we turn it over to the other presenters, are there any questions we can answer for you?
Yes.
Not so much a question, but just to offer my support for adding in number five, the prevention for vulnerable youth. I appreciate where we're talking about, you know, spending the money that we are this evening, but I also think that we need to be really sure that we're trying to prevent the, you know, addiction happening in the younger folks in our community. So however, we're able to go about that. Thank you.
Thanks.
And these funds are, they're guaranteed funds. They're not any funds that can be taken away by federal government or...
No, no, they're through the legal system, through court settlements. They're the only, the only caveat I can say that potentially can impact these is bankruptcy of these corporations or other financial issues, but not the federal, the federal government cannot take these away from us as far as I know.
And the funds that Tabitha mentioned, those are in the bank account already. We already have received those funds, so approximately 500,000, we already have.
So not the same thing.
I was gonna ask her if she was...
So not the same question, but I was reading about New Jersey. They did a destigmatization for opioid use and it came to everyone's attention that maybe that wasn't the best use of funds and they may have to pay it back, which is not the government taking, but an accountability there that could potentially affect us.
And I can't speak for the state of New Jersey. I just have to say, I have not gone through their documentation or had any understanding. But there are, like the list I showed up, there are certainly specific requirements that we have on how we spend these funds. We do have to report them every year. We have not spent any funds, so I've reported what we've received. And I even early on reported a project we had talked about at the staff level, potentially using some of these funds to help fund our juvenile diversion counselors. And that was a program they decided that we could not. Two reasons, one, because it was offsetting, it was funds that we had already, we were already...
I'm sorry.
That we were already spending money on, but they did not agree it fit into the category. So there are, there are some pretty substantial, there's about, there's hundreds of pages of regulation and they're built into the settlement agreements with the states and we have to follow those.
But we certainly can still create something down the road for education for our adolescent youth.
Absolutely, and that does clearly fall within it and that's been used.
Even though we can't use that for juvenile diversion per se, we might be able to collaborate with some of the things that they're already doing.
Potentially, yes. And we'd have to look at those on a case by case basis. But yeah, and I think we're open to whatever works and I know that we've talked about education all along.
I was going to wait, but I could ask it now because I think it's a question for you guys or maybe more of a comment. But I mean, it seems like, you know, we're going to have two really exciting proposals tonight, which I'm totally on board with and excited to hear from these folks. But it sounds like, you know, we're going to have future funding to be able to, you know, continue either funding some of these programs or also, you know, look for new options. And so I guess it is more of just a comment or a hope that, you know, we could work to create kind of some sort of, you know, process for being able to hear some of these proposals from folks. I know that, you know, we've had different grants, the encampment grants that have gone through different things that have been proposed in the past. And so that could probably, you know, be fairly in line with what, you know, we could spend this funding on. And so just, you know, wanting to maybe work as a council or work with different, you know, service providers in our community to be able to, you know, come up with some other creative ideas for spending these funds in the future.
We can, go ahead.
Yeah, and just a little bit about how these came to being. And we certainly could have kind of a more open process where we could solicit more ideas if the council wanted to do that in the future. But really, in conversations with some of our community partners like Our Space and Playhouse Arts and Arcata House that have been providing those services, we meet routinely and we've had discussions in some of our homeless services working group meetings. So these ideas really floated to the top from some of the needs that we have in front of us right now. But certainly in the future, I think we could look to have more of an open process and see what more communities' ideas are in addition to some that we have from some of our partners who are already providing those services in the community. So with that, if there's no more questions, we could hand it over.
Let's move, pardon me?
Well, I was thinking we could hear about the projects and then the council could ask questions from the presenters.
If you have any more questions in our newsroom, will there be an object?
Yes, I'm just asking if you have any more questions at this point. So now we should listen to our provider, we have two people that are...
Yeah, if we could have Caroline Griffith and Gabby Backus come up first to present the Our Space proposal, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
And we have the properties of the latest Our Space scene and a brochure. We're going to see some of the work that folks have done. I'm Caroline Griffith, I'm one of the co-directors of Our Space.
I'm her other co-director, Gabrielle Backus. Hi, nice to meet you.
And we're just going to kind of go through briefly what Our Space is all about. I know some of you know about us, but not everybody. And then we'll talk a little bit about our proposal. And so Our Space is a program of Playhouse Arts. We are an art-based community center for people experiencing houselessness, fostering hope, skills and community in Humboldt County. Go to the next slide, cool. And so we are, we are primarily, we are people. We are people who are housed, unhoused, unsheltered, sheltered, housing insecure, recently housed. Everyone is welcome at Our Space. This is definitely made for and with people who are most vulnerable community members, however. These are some of the arts, some of the art that's come out of Our Space. I'm going to go to the next slide. And a little bit of background, so obviously, you know, looking at your word cloud, your survey that just happened, houselessness is a huge issue, right, in our community. Our Space began with the December 2022 Christmas Dinner, which I just learned today was in collaboration with Arcade House Partnership. Our Space officially opened at the end of January 2023. That's when I got involved as a volunteer. And I can say that what drew me to the space was the fact that here was the inclusiveness, that this was not a spot where anyone was treated like a problem to be solved. This was a spot where folks came together to create together, which really made for, one, really great art that was coming out of there, but also just like a larger kind of ripple out into the community of people knowing each other and people respecting each other. We lost that space, it was a, you know, just a temporary location. We hosted pop-ups on the plaza throughout the summer of that year. And then we operated at the Arcata Presbyterian Church from September 2024 to May of 2025. And throughout that time, we would regularly have 25 to 35 people come during our open hours. And because there was nowhere else for people to just sit and relax and be, we kind of became a default day center in Arcata. Folks would come and charge their phones, use the internet, we had art supplies, play music and just generally exist. And as one of our supporters and participants has said, to get shelter from the storm, sometimes literally and sometimes just figuratively. And one of the, it is, it is an art program at its core, but because of a lot of the trust and relationships that have been built through that, you know, we never, we did not set out to be a social services organization, but a lot of what happens when you're sitting and creating with people and you become close with them is people open up and they talk about the struggles that they're having, whether that is just like the day-to-day struggles of being out on the streets, the mental health issues, substance use, and some of it also just the struggle of like what to do once you become housed. We definitely have folks who've gotten housed and really have to adjust to a new lifestyle and decompressing and dealing with everything that happened to them when they were out on the streets. So we do work to come up with creative ideas for how to have a world where everybody has their needs met. We can go to the next slide. So this looks like we do the Arcata Holiday Market. We've worked to create venues for our folks to sell their art. We had an art show recently where people were able to sell their art. We've done the North Country Fair a couple of years, we built this turtle with, very collaboratively. We also did the Cardboard Village this year, which was just a wild, like, you know, built a structure that 100 children rampaged on for two days straight. We do the next slide. We do field trips, open mic nights, workshops and open studio time. And you can do the next slide, you got one of our zines. We published three volumes of people's art, essays and poems. You can find all of that on the Playhouse Arts website, playhousearts.org/ourspacearts. We also started a radio program on K H H A, 94.7 FM, Humboldt Hot Air. We had our show today from 2:00 to 3:00 PM and you can find it archived on humboldhotair.org. And so like, a lot of people look at what we do and they're like, that's really sweet. Isn't that nice? You guys are making art together, but don't people need housing? And yes, absolutely, more than anything, people need housing. People need shelter, people need to be safe. But we also know that people need more than just shelter and food in order to thrive and be full human beings. And so we are there to fit that niche and to be a part of this ecosystem of services to make sure that we are serving the whole person. I'm really thinking about wellness and what it really takes for people who are... I'm really thinking about wellness and what it really takes for people who are experiencing substance use disorder and the co-occurring mental health conditions to actually be able to move into something better. And a lot of what that takes is connection, community connection, which is a huge part of what we work to provide folks. And hopefully you've been able to read a little bit in our proposal, you know, more about that and, and how we do connect with people. And I want to turn it over to Gabby, who will hopefully talk a little bit about her personal experiences.
Yeah, I can speak to the values of arts very personally as someone who has been unhoused and who sort of first encountered Our Space when I was living out of my van. And that's hard for me to even admit because it was something I felt such shame about that I didn't tell even anyone in my family at the time. Because there's so much stigma and so much wound up in all of that. But they showed up and they made their art and all of that available. And it took me a while because like so many people here, I can imagine that I didn't see the value of art at a time when I felt I needed to get into a place. I needed a job. I needed all these other things and art seemed very much like a luxury, like frivolous, really. And so I resisted for a while, but I found that in them creating a space, not only did it give me a sense of normalcy, which was desperately missing from my life at that time, but also it helped me to have conversations with myself that helped me to move forward in ways that I had not anticipated. And more than that, it helped me to connect with other people outside of my little world in ways that foster communication, not just from one person to another, but helping both parties understand sort of where they're coming from. So I know that it works and it's, it's a mystery to me even as someone who is interacting daily in this process. But I know it works. I've, I've seen it happen so many times. I've lived it. And, you know, I could cite all sorts of fun facts about how the arts impact our wellness and our health because they do. And there are numbers of studies which will back that statement. But also it's, it's essential for us now with the rains coming, that we get people out of that inclement weather and give them a chance just to, to experience that sort of normality, that connection, all of those things that make us people, you know, that make it possible for us to be functional humans in the world. And so that's sort of what we live to do.
The next slide.
That's where, that's where we were going. That's where I was going. I knew I was going somewhere with that. Lost my way, but I'm back. Yeah, I mean, more than anything, it's, it's not just about self-actualization and self-realization. I mean, I think part of what we do too is connect with our people and ask them, you know, what's important to you, what matters to you, so that they can actually gain some traction and move in that direction that means the most to them individually and hopefully create the sort of lasting changes. I know I've gone over my time. Blasted bell. But, you know, so in that, toward that end, we do a lot of sort of connecting with other people, other members of the community, other businesses, other whoever we can, who has got expertise to bring to the table.
Yeah. And I guess I will just say that that is something that we've had to really learn, but when our people, through the course of a conversation, as you're like doing a paper mache thing together or whatever, bring up a need that they have and that we have to figure out, okay, how can we, how can we fill this? And through that, we've like, we have made a lot of friends with a lot of community organizations that do other work in this ecosystem so that we can reach out and learn from each other. I think we have all our community partners on the next slide.
And that is by no means.
Yes.
All-inclusive. We've.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. We've just made good friends with the UROF Tribe Behavioral Health and Bridge Housing Program. Jim the Dog Guy, like there's, there's a lot, you know, we all have bring, you know, life involves a lot of things and there are all these organizations that work on little bits and pieces of it. So we want to fit into all of that, not taking the place of anything, but helping kind of, you know, as Jackie often says, be the fascia. Help be fascia, help connect, you know, some of these things. Anyway, one last slide, which is just what we are asking you for. Oh no, I'll just give you a minute to look at this. This is what some of our participants say. Our people really value consistency. That is one of the huge things that we hear from them. They, they love that they know on a certain day that they can be at a certain place and work on a, on a certain project, you know, kind of as we all do. And then the next slide has what we were asking for. We are, we are currently unhoused. We are looking for, to go mobile. We would like to make the Our Space Mobile so that we can bring our programming to different parts of Arcata. That is, you know, we've made really a lot of connections with folks in the downtown area. We want to make sure that we are down here with those folks. We also recognize as, as many of our people have gotten housed, that they also need things to do, that they value our programming at different spots like out at the Grove or up at the West Village Studios in Gentoli. But we do think part of being mobile is a way that we can move around, meet people where they are and not just be in one part of the community. Yeah. And we will provide access to information on local harm reduction, treatment and recovery, healthcare services. And we do propose to have some, to coordinate services with other organizations. So we're all together and have a couple of art shows and service fairs so that people can connect and network.
It's a lot. We have, we have a lot that we could not fit into this, but ultimately, yeah. And we'll talk about it any day you want.
Do we have questions? You do? Let's ask them while they're standing here.
Well, I, I guess more, more comments, but first of all, I think Gabby, the, what, what the most important thing to say is thank you for sharing your story because I can't imagine how difficult that is, but it's incredibly powerful to see you standing here in this capacity and to know that this played a role and just even you expressing that you thought it was frivolous and didn't understand and can't even maybe explain how it worked, but it did. I think that's really important for our community to hear. So thank you for being willing to do that. And I do love that it's, that you're trying to go mobile so that you can serve different parts of the community. So I think that's a great, a, a good shift in the program to really serve folks. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll, I'll just add, you know, to everything that Stacy said, plus just the, the exciting, you know, idea that you guys have kind of filled this role of being a day center and that's something that comes up time and time again. I think just in, you know, these various community meetings, talking to providers, talking to, you know, folks in the community that are unhoused of what, you know, they're, they're looking for, for a service. And oftentimes it is a day center, somewhere to charge a phone, somewhere to hang out for the day. You know, especially, you know, as we're moving into the winter months. And so I think, you know, being mobile, being able to go and meet people where they're at is going to be a great thing. And to be able to provide kind of that day center-esque service. So thank you guys. And again, thank you for, you know, sharing and sharing your story, Gabby. It's great to have you guys here and hear it all. So thanks.
Yes. Thank you so much for what you're doing. And while I am all for the housing first model, I also believe that it's really important to address, artist therapy is a really good way to help the unhoused people, folks. I did have a question. You mentioned that it's going to be mobile. And of course, my question, of course, you mentioned the Grove. Do you anticipate that it will be mostly in Valley West or is it going to be moving all around? Okay.
Yeah. And I, and I think that we really, we, we through all of our existence have been more in the downtown core area. And all the people are very mobile. Some folks are not. And when we really have like built such strong connections with people down here that we are not going to leave them high and dry. As this entire summer, we've been pulling a cart filled with art supplies and food and coffee from the Playhouse to the Plaza two days a week because we don't have a space to be, but we are not going to leave people hanging. Like we need them to know that we're, we're still here, you know?
So my other question is, you talked about the clubhouse model. And we, we, you did touch upon like, we don't know why or how it works. And I guess my question is, thinking about long-term issues of the house, of the unhoused, how are we going to measure the success of this clubhouse model? And then I guess, ask the question that other people are probably thinking is how is this model going to address the long-term issues of housing? And then my other question, and I apologize, I should let you answer that one first. Sorry.
I've actually dug deep into the, the whole clubhouse model and there is quite a few studies. There's a lot of evidence that shows that over time it's successful, in part because it's, it's very much like a club in that you connect with people and those people become part of sort of your default family. And as such are there for you with, when you're housed and if you're just trying to adjust to being housed, which is oddly enough a thing, that we're there for you. And so I, I feel like it, it lends itself well to longevity of, of, I don't want to say solving, but you know, dealing, handling those issues and tackling them in a way that is good for the community and for the individual in that we're not just, you know, dealing with the, sort of the symptoms of being unhoused or getting to the core of it.
And, and I will say another way that's also, I mean, one, one, there's a lot of things that got us to this point, right? It's a lot of different things went wrong to, to lead us to our current situation, right? So there's not going to be any one solution. But one way that we will know if we're successful is if we are able to, as our desire is, to hire our participants.
Yeah.
That is huge. And we've been able to do that with a few folks and to continue to do that, to make sure that we are employing our people, that they are building this program, that it is happening in this collaborative way. That is how we will measure our success.
I love that idea. Thank you for sharing that with us. As we know, the money is limited. Hopefully there will be future funding, but we don't know when the money is going to be trickling in. And I guess my question is, because, and this is kind of moving into the next project, but, but we want to get people out of the weather. Winter is here. I like that this is the place that people can get out of the weather and, and be dry. I'm wondering if we might be able to fund this project with less money so that we can start moving towards, as Sarah brought up, we had talked about Cooperation Humboldt at one point, had did this encampment grant and it didn't come to fruition, but we have this incredible model of sleeping cabins that Sequoia and Dan Falk did, his father. And there's actually a great blueprint and a model over at St. Vinnie. Looks like they can be produced between $2,000 and $7,000. Just pick the middle of it there. I'm just thinking about the money between the two projects and how we might better use it or future funding, what that could look like, how we can parse it down into maybe other projects. We could do 100 sleeping cabins for about 500,000, still have about 240,000 left to do wraparound services and of course leave a little bit of money there for hopefully leasing some land. And then we could bring your program to a physical spot. And it doesn't have to be all in 100 and, you know, we can do some in churches, 10 here, 10 there. We could pick up a, I know that Hoopa right now is doing a really great program for tiny houses that are solar. And I was just seeing something on Facebook about sleeping cabins that are solar. And, and so I'm just thinking out loud of how we can best use these funds because it's not going to hope, I, I don't think it's going to come around again. And we want to get the biggest bang for our buck, but I definitely want to see this program go to fruition. And so wondering if we can maybe pare it down so that we can start thinking about maybe utilizing getting one of the modulators that they're building up in Hoopa, $70,000. That could be a community room where you could bring that program there too as well. And it could be for, you could do NAA, all of those other programs that are also, you know, opportunities to bring people together and, and address rehabilitation, drug addiction, all of that. And I, I know that was.
No, no, no. And we are all for all solutions. I mean, really, because there are.
I just was going to talk a little bit about the budget because that's kind of my, my bailiwick at the Playhouse. There are so many great ideas of how this program fits and dovetails within things. Some of the Redwood Region Rise events that have come back around. We're part of those discussions too with housing and how we can connect our people with some of the people who are doing innovative housing and how those jobs could go there for people who have been in construction or roofers or whatever. The crux of this program is, this is a bare bones budget. This is a bare bones budget to make sure that we have 75 hours of staffing, that we don't burn stuff out, that we can get a trailer, that we can get a truck that runs, that we can fulfill the idea that we can have a place that is ours, that we will not be driven from, that people can't say, you can't come back here. And that kind of longevity and that kind of consistency with this budget, we're committing to, to raising another $16,000 to make it work. So I'm not saying I need all of this money from the city, but the amount of time, energy, work, supplies, knowledge, how we have funded the project for another year and a half with no funding from anyone. This is bare bones.
And I noticed that you did those in kind to bring down the budget.
They're not in kind.
That's why I was just.
We left it, we exed up, sorry, the Work Investment Board. I met with them when they were here. They're very interested in what we're doing. We work closely with Peggy from the Work Investment Board. And I think the possibility for this small investment to blossom is huge. You know, Barbara Kingsolver just did a, a thing in Appalachia about opioid addiction and, and writing. And it's, it's not an uncommon thing. And it's a really big chance for Arcata to be at the vanguard of opioids and, and how we can look at addiction. Less money, I feel, is not the way forward with this budget that I've put together, we worked together on. There's just, there's no way to make it work on any less than what we're getting. Just if you're looking at a year-long program, and really we're looking at a three-year program. If we can get one year under our belt, the possibility for getting more funding from the county, from the state, from other places is greater. So.
And I did want to raise that, that this isn't 16 weeks or six months. This is for the full year program.
This is the full year.
I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you for.
Sorry, I just.
And we appreciate that jumping in there. So, okay, then I, if that's a conclusion of this presentation, are we ready for our next one?
I have to walk all the way across town. I have no way. Okay. Well, I still have something to say.
Hey ma'am.
May I please?
No ma'am, it'll be really soon and you can be first for public comment. I know you've been waiting.
I don't like to be ignored.
It'll be soon.
So are, are we ready for our second center?
So we have Darlene Spohr with Arcata House, who can explain the other proposal.
Thank you. I didn't know there was a presentation tonight. I was just asked to be here, so here I am. But it's always my pleasure to talk about what Arcata House Partnership does. And I want to start by thanking you for really looking at the needs of our city. They're greater than any of us could manage alone and they're greater than we can expect the city to pay for. So I really appreciate that we're talking about these funds and what this does and how we collectively can serve the people who are most in need or as Arcata House Partnership is committed to serving people who are homeless. What our proposal is, is to, to work collaboratively with the, with Playhouse Arts and other organizations to serve people throughout the days and nights. And so we're adding the night pieces. We, we certainly will be doing a day warming center, which we always do and will open every, every day, Monday through Friday, maybe on the weekends when extreme weather shelter is called. And we'll do shelter. We'll do shelter long-term for people who need our support. I want to answer a couple of the questions that were asked of, of Playhouse Arts that also apply to us. And one of those questions is, how do you measure success? And here's a story that I've told over the years and some of you may have heard it. And when we go out and we do street outreach and sometimes we, we used to go out with our food truck and now we, we do it a little differently, but we would go to 15th and Union and we would serve people sack lunches there. And there were some people there and they wouldn't come to us. And, and after months and months and months of somebody coming to get a meal for them, finally they would come and get it from the picnic table. And maybe sometime later, they would finally connect with our staff person. The way we measure success, the way I think you will measure success as well, is not whether we serve 15 people today, but maybe that one person also who finally is ready to come to Arcata House Partnership to be sheltered or to be housed. Right? And so sometimes the way to measure success isn't day by day and it's not sandwich by sandwich, but it takes all of us. We partner with Arcata Playhouse. So I'm just, a plug, please, please. I, I saw their proposal and their budget and I do agree, I don't think that they're exaggerating that budget at all. I encourage you to really consider that. We need those kinds of programs. What we do, what they do is we build community. When we're moving people from being unhoused to being housed or even to be in temporary shelter, we know the importance of building new community, especially when we're working with people who have addiction problems and want to move out of their old standard community. with people who have addiction problems and want to move out of their old standard community that supported those addictions, and into a new, healthier community. And so we, our number one priority is to build community, and so is Arcata Arts, our Playhouse Arts. I think that Merritt has done a great service here by bringing organizations like us, like Playhouse Arts, like those partners that we are all talking about, to really provide a wraparound service, a way to look at service in a whole new light. Like, what does it really mean for us to serve the whole person, right? And I think that that's brilliant. And we are only part of the emergency response system. We are a small part. Playhouse Arts is a small part. It takes us all to do this. And so I really appreciate the opportunity. We want to make sure that our day warming center is enhanced by overnight shelter opportunities. It's so necessary for people to have a place to be before they can start thinking about recovery. If I was living on the street, I would want beer and a big dog, right? And I think that's really, I don't drink so beer, for me, it's like opioids for somebody, maybe. I don't know. But why, why would we even try at this point to encourage people to seek recovery when we have no other option? So this is the beginning. This is the option. This is how we connect with people. This is how we connect with people. We bring them in, we do services, and we provide shelter as well. So, thank you. I don't have anything fancy. I'll pretend I'm using Jackie's fancy PowerPoint. Oh, I'm using Gabby's fancy PowerPoint, because they're all the same people that we serve. So thank you for the opportunity.
And if I could just add to, you know, we approached Darlene with this, and we know what the acute need is. The councils expressed their support for the winter weather shelter in the past. So we said, Darlene, you know, we know there's more of a need. What can you do to help? We have an obligation to use these opioid funds for the highest need that we have right now. And so Darlene really responded more than coming to us, saying, hey, I have this proposal. We came to her and say, hey, we see this acute need, you know, what can we do and how can you help? And so I think she modified her proposal, I don't know, at least three or four or five times, to get to a budget number that we felt like we could sustain, but still leave capacity in the future. And we're really just looking, rather than having these funds sit there and not do any good, how can we do some good in the community now? And so I appreciate Darlene, Playhouse Arts, R-Space, for providing some options to look at that. And again, we'll be looking at other things in the future and want to hear if there's other ideas. So please, you know, reach out if you do have other ideas for how we could use these funds.
Well, I'd like to thank staff for stepping up and thinking about how to use these funds in an appropriate way, and thank you all for working with staff to make something happen that'll be beneficial. I really appreciate that. And are there more questions from the council?
I did.
Thank you for the work you do. When would your services start?
This, as soon as the ink is dry.
Yesterday would be best.
It is, it is time, right? We usually gear up for expanded service from November 15th, so it's time. Obviously, we're going to need to hire and train staff, so it'll be several weeks. I think I wrote in the proposal, I expect two weeks after we get the go-ahead that we'd be ready to implement this with full force.
Hopefully, with the timing, we can scoop up those folks from the property that people have left and have nowhere to go. And with the weather here, it couldn't be better timing. My only wish would be, is that it would be longer. I wish that at the end of 16 weeks, we got a landfall rich benefactor to bring more money in, because, you know, where are they going to go? And, you know, that's, I mean, 16 weeks of getting a good start, hopefully some of those will go into rehabilitation, maybe get a job, and find some kind of transitional housing. But it doesn't feel like it's long enough. But, but it's something.
Right.
And we go with what we got, and hopefully, there will be more money in the future. You mentioned something about the day warming center enhancement, and I apologize with some background noise that was a little distracting. So could you tell me a little bit about that? I mean, it sounds like it will work well with the 20 motel rooms that we're talking about, 20-ish or so.
So, during the extreme weather shelter calendar time, November 15th to March 15th, we open a warming center at the annex for people to come in. And I do, I want to address the timeline. The intent here is really, we're already working with the people that got displaced at other places, right? We're already working with them. I think you're working with them. We're all working with them. We know who people are. Some of them are in our brick and mortar shelter. With this funding, what we hope to do is get people ready so that when the expansion of our Boyd Road Shelter is complete, with 40 units of individual or two-person rooms, that we'll be able to move people who are ready into that project, right? Now, again, not everyone that we serve is ready to have a place to sleep or to be part of a program. And I want to be really clear for all of us, right? Sometimes it's impossible for someone to come in, and we serve in lots of different ways. This is just one piece.
And not everybody is ready to share and spread that love. And this goes to the point that Valley West, which I know that's where the hotel motels are, so that's where it has to be, but we are a hugely impacted disadvantaged community anyway. So I would love to see some way to brainstorm for future, to share that love in other neighborhoods and not have just one neighborhood being impacted. And thank you for all the work you do.
Thanks. And that's why we included additional staff support, because we have heard from you and others that there needs to be much more oversight in this program. So thank you, I appreciate that.
So thank you also, and so now we could take this into public comment.
Mayor, I owe you an apology, because it was not my place to promise our potential public commenter that she could go first, but I was trying to deescalate, so. If she is still waiting, we should invite her in?
Well, let's start and see, and if she comes in, we'll move her forward. Thank you very much. Would you like to start, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I think the last time we had a census on the homeless, I was really shocked that Arcata was actually higher than Eureka. I thought Eureka would hands down be more homeless there, but it was actually Arcata. And I think the numbers were, I don't know, like, maybe like 500 homeless in Arcata. So, I mean, I think what they're, you know, as far as the arts getting involved, I mean, those are all good things, but I guess my concern is, there's going to be hundreds of people out there that are not going to have shelter, they're going to be rained on. And, you know, I look at this money, and what it's going to be, what, three months in helping 20 people, and then it's gone. And so I wouldn't even say this is outside the box idea, but Time Standard, Eureka, they invested, I mean, they're not pretty, but they're these small portables they put on a lot with sewage. So the bathroom's outside, just bare minimum, but they have housing that are permanent, that are going to be there year after year after year. So my suggestion is that you start thinking a little bit, you know, along those lines. And I also have read a lot about some other big cities, like on the East Coast, where when they're reaching out with people with problems, they have like a doctor in a van, and they go out, and the doctor knows all the homeless folks, and he treats them on the spot, they have open wounds, tries to encourage them to get treatment. So, I mean, those are just examples of other ways, you know, to spend the money. And I know from reading also in the state of California, billions and billions of dollars have gone to trying to solve the homeless issue. And the public is really getting kind of frustrated, because they see a lot of money, they think, being spent on it, and they're not really seeing the results. So, I mean, I remember just a few years ago, you know, coming out of these meetings sometimes at 10 o'clock at night, and then right outside here on the patio, there was probably 20 people with sleeping bags sleeping out there, and I'm sure the staff didn't really like that. But I felt at the time, at least, you know, they're not getting rained on, and the nights it was raining, there is a bathroom across the street. So, you know, I'm just concerned that this is, it's just going to be a little, a lot of money, and then it's going to be gone in three months, and it's not going to really change things. So I just think, it's, I mean, it's a huge problem that the whole state, the whole country's facing, but we need to have some other ideas out there. Otherwise, there's just not going to be that much change. Thank you.
Well, one thing is, we need additional housing, and so we need to get units finished and built, and that's one way to help out with the housing situation. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, I just want to say that perhaps, you know, I feel similarly, that we do need to do more to get to those housing units, but, you know, in the meantime, we need to do everything that we can. This is a very serious problem, and if we don't have a better immediate option on the table, I think we should do this.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I've attended several gatherings in this room over the years. One happened when there wasn't a quorum, but people came soon after Nancy Barnes died at the door of City Hall. And I think Councilmember Schaefer and Matthews, and you were not Councilmember White currently on the council, but you attended a gathering of people voicing, citizens voicing concerns about what are we going to do? And back in November 1st of 2023, and I don't believe Mayor Stillman was at that meeting, people came to talk about the unhoused and what are we going to do when winter comes. And it's on video, and I encourage everybody to watch November 1st, 2023, City Council meeting, because a lot of people were asking for more than what we're always getting, and the last-minute-ness of a lot of this. And one of the things that I've been asking for and others have been asking for is a task force, a citizens' task force. So it doesn't just come from staff and from you and from the people getting the money, it comes from us, the citizens, who want to see how we can braid a lot of these services together in a good economical way for a very, very successful result. And so these pocket projects are wonderful, but there's ends to them, and what's going to happen at the end of them that's going to show us that we're actually handling this problem successfully. So a citizens' task force, why the elected officials here are reluctant to allow those of us in the community to be a part of this discussion, and not just the people who run the programs, I'm really kind of offended by that, because we have a voice, and we have desire and ideas as well. And one of the ideas is, there's a lot of money that is gained from the resources that we have in this community, such as the D Street Neighborhood Center. So I know it gets rented out. What's the wintertime rental average for that building, and why can we not turn that into a consistent weather shelter for the winter with programs like R-Space is proposing, with other entities coming in there? Put up the circus tent on the grassy area outside that for other purposes. Why aren't we thinking about using the resources we have and the money that's going toward this for some sort of consistent program that can really get people settled under a roof with services, even overnight, and fed, and doing art? And then working with people one-on-one, I've been trying to help a homeless individual myself who lives in Eureka now, and I cannot tell you how much energy it requires for one person, and we need to do it collectively in a citizens' task force.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi there. Oh, is there? Okay. Hi there. So I just wanted to say a few things. I don't want to take up too much time on this, but I would encourage you to please fund this. I think that it's a good solution for now. I think a lot more needs to be done. I strongly believe that housing is a human right, and that we need to find more permanent housing solutions for everyone impacted by this. You know, these are human beings who deserve a place to live, who deserve, you know, prominent healthcare, housing, and just a safe place to be. I think that's another thing we could really improve on with this, on the talk of addiction and things like that. You know, a lot of that comes down to a couple of things, like poverty, struggling with that, and then like health issues lead into that, you know? Mental health issues too, when people can't get the help that they need. So making sure that we're really working towards more widely available healthcare and services. And I know we're a small community, but I also know that we can do a lot better than we're doing now. So please do fund this, but also, I would really like to see even more initiatives towards helping people in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Tricia Murphy, and I'm here in support of the Sister City with Gaza.
Oh, this is the wrong time. I'm sorry. This is dealing with our last project. I'm sorry. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Niall. I just want to speak about R-Space for a minute. I'm a participant and a volunteer. It has like changed my trajectory as like a human being in the community, like, absolutely, it's like given me purpose, and I've seen, like, here, I've got some words, I'm really bad with this. So like, art is a conduit for growth. My experience with this group has allowed me to grow through the chaos, through the chaos of what everyone involved goes through, it actually has allowed me to become more grounded as a community member. I've seen so many beautiful moments transpire from just, from just hold, like, being able to hold space for participants, which I consider myself to be as well. It's messy, and it's not necessarily a straightforward process. Sometimes it's very difficult, but I've seen a lot of shifts in people's perspective through connecting and creating. We're all, as human beings, hurting inside, as far as I've observed, and healing is a lifelong process. I appreciate, like, a lot of things that everybody said.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Is there another speaker? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pat Kanzler, and I'm just, just a comment about the monies to be dispersed. If you want to prevent drug abuse, I think you need housing, you need food, and you'd need healthcare, especially in this political atmosphere. We need local governments to step up, because the federal government isn't, and people are going to be losing a lot of these things. Like I said, healthcare, food, and housing, please. Please, as a local government, could you step up? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Please come forward. Thank you.
I think that it's, one thing about R-Space, they do love people no matter what, and there's a lot of people in Arcata right now that do want that recovery part, and it's just meeting them where they're at. It'd be nice to have help in that area where, like, I'm able to send people to these places that they can get this help that they want, but it takes time, and it takes repeating, and they're always consistent. Consistency in this realm, it's important for them to get that dignity, feeling like a human, and it takes time. It's not overnight, but there's a lot of people reaching out for help, and there's not enough places to send them to get off of opiates right now. And all we can do is just keep repeating, saying, thank you.
Thank you very much. And sir, would you like to come and speak? You're standing in line, is anyone else? Would you like to come up and speak? Thank you.
Yes, I also just want to second the support for R-Space Arts and for Arcata House Partnership. And I also just want to hold space for the person who is outside. I, I, it's not just background noise, this is, this is a real person who is going through something that we might not understand, but I hope that her voice is able to be heard. And, and.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Yes, I need to speak. My name is Heidi Curtis. I was deter- Yes, I need to speak. My name is Heidi Curtis. I was determined to be disabled when I was 10 years old, and I was, so that makes me a child in need of services. So, and still to this day, I am a child, okay? I cannot make legal decisions for myself. I'm not allowed to make medical decisions for myself. And so, I'm out on the street. I, okay, so I became homeless after an incident in 2018, where, in Southern Humboldt, where I was rescued. No, can I ask?
Yeah, but you need to look at us.
Okay, the direct, I, look, I have been abused really bad, and I get scared. It's nothing against you, but I have to look where I have to look, and please be patient with that. But I may not be able to give you direct eye contact, because I'm living my own life, and I'm trying to do, I've got a lot of anxiety. I'm getting ready to tell you why. So, in 2018, March, maybe, I was rescued. We'll, we'll start here. We'll just, just right here. We'll start right here. I was rescued from China Creek in Southern Humboldt, from a man named Ryan Tanner's house. It took the cops forever to get there. I, I mean, I, I was over, I won't, I'm not going to give you the other details, just from this point. This is how, how I became homeless. So, I was there for 41 days, okay? The driveway was bulldozed, okay? So, I couldn't leave with my car and my dog, okay? I'm being held against my will here. The police, when they do get there, just take me, like, make him unbulldoze the driveway, and just send me down the hill, like, figure it out yourself. And I sat there for two years, because I, I don't have a mom to go to and be like, hey, I need my family to talk about this or that, because I don't have that. Is that because I opted out? It's because they're not present, they're dead, you know? And so, I had nobody to call, and so I sat there for two years, wondering if I was crazy. I started becoming suicidal, cutting myself, quit taking care of myself, everything. And when he finally was picked up in connection with the death of Jason Garrett, still, I went, and they wouldn't let me, because I'm mentally inept to speak up for myself once again, so I couldn't testify or share anything of my point of view, because I'm inept. And so, I asked for services. I'm like, hey, you know, I'm now homeless because of all this. They're like, well, we don't know what to do for you. Okay, that's fine. I accepted all that, this and that. Well, still, I, it doesn't change anything, so I'm a victim of all sorts of types of abuse and neglect my entire life. I have good manners. I love my dog. I'm a good person, and I don't understand. I was, I figured out, I started budgeting the other day. I'm not very good at math, because I didn't get all of my education because of an incident that happened when I was in fourth grade. They did severe brain damage, and I had to go through physical therapy for, like, two years, you know, just to be able to go back to school and stuff. And I just certain things I can't do, and I've been, they've been taking advantage of me for so long, that they just think they can do it forever, because I can't speak up for myself. They, I'm inept. So, somehow, they've got me in this paradigm with this partnership health plan, okay, where I can't sign out of it, okay? I have no place to live. Please, okay? Well, I, I have no place to live. I'm, I'm not a bad person. I'm a human being. I am being, my, my quality of life, my health, my sanity, all that is being drugged through the rocks, is all I can say. And I, alls I'm asking for is not one of these horrible housing units like The Grove. And by the way, I've been having to stay there, because I have no place to be, and I have a dog, and I don't want to lose my only family member that I have. Half of those rooms, just, they just leave the lights on all day and night, and there's nobody occupying them. Okay, so I don't know what they tell you. Okay, well, it has, well, let me finish. Let me finish saying what I have to say. Please, will you not interrupt me and respect me? Did I do that to you? Please don't, please. That's all I'm asking. Then sit down and stop it. Please don't touch me and tell me what to do. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. So, alls I'm asking for is a place to live that's safe. I need a safe place so I can heal. I can't do anything in this environment. And it, like, I had, came here earlier in slippers, because my shoes were taken, so I, and I don't have a coat, because this is all I have. I got this outfit out of the dumpster before I got here.
So, ma'am?
Yes, so I'm asking for help. You, I'm the minor here, you know? That's your guys' job to decide what should be done, but I think a safe place to live is not too much to ask. Just because of all of these reasons, I, I'm uncomfortable to be in public in a lot of ways, and it's because of this. I was arrested 14 times last year.
Well, you know, we, we appreciate you coming and speaking to us today.
Never for drugs, though, okay?
And thank you very much for your time and your presentation. Thank, thank you very much. So, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic?
I do have some hands on Zoom.
You have on Zoom. Thank you. Amy, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, just gonna take a minute with that. I am very grateful for this opportunity to join this meeting on Zoom. I have been double-dutying. I am also a social worker in the community and currently working, and so having access to Zoom is really wonderful to be able to plug my love and care and appreciation for the work that R-Space does with our community members. When you're talking about what does having access to art do, I, I think you can, art is, art is, allows people to speak who, words are, are difficult to find and difficult to use, and when you've been silenced for so long, being able to express yourself in ways that aren't verbal is, was one of the greatest gifts you can have, and, and not only is there not enough of that, I think funding this, the, the outcomes are immeasurable. And of course, I can probably write, I am a master of social work student at Cal Poly in my second year, and I would be happy to write an article with a ton of citations for that, but I think you can also listen to your soul and, and know that art allows you to access places in this world that you can't otherwise, especially when you're somebody who is shunned from spaces like the ones that we're currently in. I, I can, I'm on Zoom, but I can sense how uncomfortable that person, having that difficult experience, just made a lot of you feel. And when you are not welcome in spaces, having a space where you are, and where you are given tools to express yourself and told that you matter and your voice matters, that is life-changing for a lot of people. And if you are somebody who thinks that all life is sacred, and that everyone deserves to be heard and be seen, then funding R-Space is a no-brainer. And as, if we have any choice as to what we can fund in this world, it should be ways of giving people back their agency, when there are so few of those that exist. So, please, fund these programs and services. As somebody who works with youth, they're watching. I was in a meeting tonight where youth are wondering whether or not they should have the current event that they're coming, because none of the adults listen to them anyway. So, I'd really appreciate it if you can show these youth that you care, and that you want to create spaces for this in our community, and that this world does value every single person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have another speaker on Zoom?
Yes, there's three hands raised currently.
Thank you.
Divest, please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The most safe and healthy communities are not the most policed, but the most, most resourced. So, community control over forces. Our local government levers must be used to deliver on the human needs of our people, including but not limited to universal housing and rent freezes, instead of big real estate deals or universities tied to apartheid, sucking up all the opportunities which just get used for profits. Universal expanded and improved healthcare, not the big insurance racket that exists to deny actual care. More safe public restrooms with public showers. Fair, free public transportation. Fully funded public libraries with extended hours and hang spaces that don't discriminate against local Palestinians, because they're Zionists. Reparations to Black people whose labor was used to build this country's economy and have not been paid back for the wealth gap. Community arts, honored treaties with Native peoples here, which are survivors of settler colonial genocide, revitalizing their, their culture and language is, languages. Community art centers funded with art supplies for our people, like, et cetera, just for example. This is not charity. It is the conditions for human beings on this planet, which capitalism always racialized, has usurped for maximum profits and ravaging our planet. At one time, this was our return on our taxes, which is being used now to wage a sadistic genocide against.
Well, you know, this topic, are you really on?
And subsidize technology and weapons to wage violence here via ICE. Don't interrupt me. A people-centered city hall is the opposite of what you've embodied the last two years that I've engaged in. Thank you. Don't interrupt me again.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Emma, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for having me. My name is Emma, and I'm a constituent in Arcata. And first, I would just like to say, it is a great privilege to be able to join via Zoom, as somebody who is chronically ill and cannot always make it out. And then I will keep the rest of my message short and sweet. I am a huge favor of R-Space. I think it is a great, as others have said, temporary solution to our homelessness crisis here. Of course, I think we should be looking at other options, but for now, I think this deserves funding. Yeah, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Shannon, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm just here to speak in favor of R-Space. I think it's a wonderful thing to foster connection within our community through art, and just to remind everyone that we are all human and we are all connected, no matter what our class status is. I just wanted to note in the record that it's just sad and depressing to imagine the billions upon billions upon billions of dollars that these companies like Beatrice is worth, and the little pennies that they are giving out to the cities in response to the problem that they created and profited from incredibly. It's just, it's sad, but I'm hopeful that we have amazing people that are trying to help and do good in this world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the council, and what is your pleasure?
I will make a motion to approve the use of $217,000, $217,048 of opioid settlement fund to serve unsheltered and substance use disorder-impacted individuals by providing emergency shelter and wraparound services through Arcata House Partnership, and then also move to approve the use of $154,669 of opioid settlement funds to, by providing daytime shelter, relief, and support of the community services for the Clubhouse Model for R-Space, a program of Playhouse Arts, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
Thank you. A second, please. Thank you. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So, I would like to take a five-minute So now we'll move on to our. If everyone is ready and thank you for that break. Um, we're going to go on to review and approve the revisions of the city officials protocol manual. And we do this once a year. And so we're, I will turn it over to staff and then we'll come back to the council.
Yeah, I'll just like, I'd just like to point out that we have Nubia Goldstein, our deputy city attorney. And so she put the staff report together. She's had input from staff and and some input from council. And so um, Nubia is online. There was some questions earlier. Is our attorney online? Yes, she is. And so with that, we will hand it over to Nubia to present this item.
Thank you, Merritt, and good evening, Mayor and council members. So before you tonight, um, as Mayor Stillman has uh, referenced. Uh, this is a periodic review of the city officials protocol manual. Um, and as part of that annual review, we take a look combined with staff. To determine if there's any changes that we can recommend to the council for changes and updates. There's, you know, there are changes in state law. That warrant further discussion or changes to policy. Um, we bring that forward for the council's consideration. And so tonight specifically, we're proposing seven changes to the handbook. Related to different um, areas. I'll say some of them are more cleanup items. Uh, than maybe substantive. And there are a few that I'm, I know are will be of no end of uh, discussion tonight. So let's go through the seven proposed changes. And then I can go back to the council for any specific questions that you may have. Um, and then and hopefully get some recommendation on steps to move forward. So the first change relates to section two point nine, uh, specifically related to changing the title for the Board of Appeals. This is to reflect the change that was made uh, recently to the municipal code. Um, with adoption of ordinance number fifteen seventy-seven. The second change relates to uh, the provisions regarding public noticing of meetings and hearings. And so it does eliminate or remove the requirement that the agenda must be available and posted. Um, for the public at the public library branch. This really mirrors uh, an old provision of law that required multiple postings um, in more prominent places. But with the changes um, at the state level and changes to the Brown Act over time. Now the requirements are generally, as long as they're posted in one prominent location, usually at city hall. And online on the city's website, then that meets the requirements of the Brown Act. So. We are making the change or recommending the change to match what's required under state law. The third change relates to section eight point seven in terms of the development of the agenda. It just changes the internal deadline for staff. Um, to submit staff reports from Wednesday to Monday. Again, this is more of, more of an internal cleanup. To make sure that aligns with staff's time and review of agenda items in order to prepare everything for the next council meeting agenda. Section eight point seven point one relates to public comments during the meeting. This proposed change does uh, in, in essence, shift the requirement. That all, all public comments be in pub, in public and basically at city hall. It uh, does contemplate the removal or adjustment of uh, removing the virtual component. So. In this case, the city uses Zoom as a virtual platform. So this would eliminate that as um, a standing. Every meeting protocol. Um, a little bit of background in terms of this specific change is that. While there hasn't been a formal policy in place, this is really a creature of uh, the pandemic. And what was happening basically for the three years that uh, we were under a state of emergency. The state has since then um, lifted the state of emergency. But the creation of this virtual platform really for just the increased use of it for public meetings. Has necessitated, I think, further evaluation by the legislature in terms of what the requirements are. And so to that point, recently, the legislature enacted and the governor did sign into law Senate Bill seven oh seven. Which sets forth very specific requirements, additional stringent requirements on noticing of meetings. Um, it, it is a whole over, I'll say a significant uh, addition of requirements from. Uh, language translation uh, and allowing for agendas to be uh, available to individuals in multiple languages. There's an outreach component that wasn't there before that will now be applicable moving forward. Um, SB seven oh seven also um, expands. If the council is familiar with the remote requirements for uh, participating council members. You can participate remotely under um, AB two four four nine. If you can meet the criteria for uh, exigent circumstance or an emergency. And this law has expanded the, the use of that. It also allows for. Council members or appointed elected officials to participate remotely. Under the grounds of an ADA reasonable accommodation request. So that's an additional change. One of the biggest changes under SB seven oh seven is that it now formally requires. That certain jurisdictions allow for public participation or but more public comment. Through a virtual uh, platform if you meet certain criteria. And so uh, as it relates to cities, cities that have population of thirty thousand. Um, individuals or more is, will now be required to have. A virtual platform available to participants in order to provide public comment. Uh, Arcata's population does not meet that threshold. So this gives the council a more flexibility. In whether, determining whether or not Zoom or a similar virtual platform is appropriate or good use. Uh, for purposes of public participation. So again, uh, I think there is um, there's a sentiment of strong. Um, encouragement from the state in allowing that platform to exist. But it's not mandatory for cities that are under thirty thousand. So again, in Arcata's case. The city council has full discretion on how it would like to um, en- encompass that, that arena in terms of public participation. The next change relates to the early oral and written communications. This is something that's very unique to Arcata. And it is a section of the agenda in which there is limited public comment on non-agendized items, limited to fifteen minutes. Uh, we do have a very uh, structured. Step-by-step process by which people can participate in that. We have included this as a potential change to, in, in essence, combine. Oral, the early oral and written communication portion with the later uh. Non-agendized public comment portion together, in essence, to streamline the agenda. Streamline the internal process. Again, very unique to Arcata and it's completely allowed under the Brown Act. There are no limitations associated with it. Um, but we have included this as a potential change. If the council is inclined to, to potentially change it and remove this portion of the agenda. And essentially combine it with um, the later uh, public comment section. The next change relates to the city manager's report and looking basically to change this, a slight change to the order of business. It'll require that the city manager provide a report um, specifically at each meeting. And then the last uh, provision that we're seeking direction from the council on is the addition of. Section eight, eight fifteen related to disturbance of city council meetings. Uh, this specifically is in response to recent legislative changes that have set forth very. Specific parameters by which local agencies can um, take, take steps. To avoid disruptions of public meetings. And in essence, what it does is creates a step-by-step process. Providing um, the law requires clear warnings be provided to individuals who are disrupting the meeting. And then again, lays out the process by which someone could potentially be removed from the meeting. In order to allow the proceedings to continue without further disruption. So again, this language. Um, is intended to just mirror state law and just make, make, make it more formal and formalize as part of the city's protocol manual. So with that general overview of the requested or suggested changes. The two and the one specifically that I like to focus a little bit more on is the section eight point seven point one. Related to public comments during the meeting. I think that one um, has been uh, probably one of the, the more. Um, in uh, interest of, of interest, an item of interest, I think that we've received. Um, from staff and from council in terms of just discussing the pros and cons of potentially switching these, this over. So again, what this does, it eliminates the uh, what I'll say is real-time participation of individuals. Uh, from the meeting. It doesn't eliminate their, uh, individual's ability to watch the proceedings. It doesn't eliminate uh, the individual's ability to submit written comments. Prior to the city council meeting that will be uh, part of the record and will, and are included. And is part of the meeting. Items that are presented to council. Those comments are always incorporated and part of the, the official minute, minutes of the, of the proceeding. Um, but again, it, it does eliminate that real, uh, real in, uh, real-time uh, participation. Um, for, for the time being. Um, one question that I had received specifically about this is, well, is there, are there trends? Are there cities that are um, basically statewide, what, what are the trends? So following during COVID and following COVID, there was a big uptick in uh, what else they are the virtual platforms. It could have been. Zoom, a lot of smaller jurisdictions were trying to use Teams and GoMeeting um, as alternatives. Once the state restrictions started lifting and there was more in-person meetings taking place. Um, a lot of jurisdictions kept the Zoom or the virtual platform component. Um, as a way to, you know, generate, you know, more interest from the public and participation. I think that over time and since the lifting of the restrictions. There has been some shift to go back to um. Making everybody go back in person and maybe just allowing uh, individuals to observe remotely, but not necessarily participate. Again, there was that flexibility. So there have been some jurisdictions that have done that and who have um, made that change. Uh, there was an, there was a timeframe in late twenty twenty-three. Uh, where there were incidents of Zoom bombing. And I think that um, also led to the. Um, elimination for some jurisdictions, at least temporarily, of a virtual meeting platform. In order to avoid uh, the, the challenges that come with trying to regulate that in real time. Um, and to avoid any sort of complications and, and issues related to the Zoom bombing. So. At this point, from what, from what we can tell, I would say that the majority, definitely more than fifty percent of. Local jurisdictions at the state level allow some form of uh, virtual participation. Now, that will likely, the numbers will likely shift now following the implementation of SB seven oh seven, which now will require. The jurisdictions that are over thirty thousand specifically for cities, it will require um, some type of virtual component. So that, that number will change, but it will most likely change not by choice, but because it's now the law. So with that in mind, in terms of a little bit of background, um, what, what are some of the goals? Um, that staff is, is looking to get some direction from council in terms of making these changes. I think one of the big goals that um, we're setting forth for the councils uh, for discussion. Is some challenges that we have observed through the use of Zoom. In the last several months, specifically as it relates to ensuring equal time and treatment across the board. So one of the requirements that the city has is that in, in imposing time limits and restrictions. They have to be applied equally across amongst all speakers. So whether they're in person or whether they're virtual. The one caveat to that is that our early oral communications is limited to two minutes. When the non-agendized public comment portion does have three. That's another reason why the suggested change is, is in essence to remove any confusion about. Being able to speak less time early on, or do you wait to speak later and you have more time? Again, it's, it's perfectly permissible, but as a suggestion, just from the perspective of. Um, best practices and efficiency of the meeting. That's why that, that recommendation is before you tonight. But specifically issues that we have seen and that I have observed during meetings. Is one specifically relates to monitoring overuse of public comment in real time. And what I mean by that is that there have been, I believe, at least on one occasion for sure. Individuals who will provide public comment in person and then will most likely leave the meeting. And log online afterwards and under a different name or some other alias. Will provide additional public comment. Well, that's not allowed. The rule is everyone has either the two minutes or the three minutes since you only get to speak one time. And so. Monitoring that and ensuring um, equity and fairness to make sure that it applies across the board. Is difficult to do in a virtual setting and in real time. And it creates some logistical problems and. What it also has done and other things that we have observed from the staff level is that in carrying out Zoom. Um, you lose a little bit of that connection with the individual on the other side. And by that I mean, when you're in public and you're at chambers, there's a, there's a timer. There's a easier ability to uh, gently remind the individual that their time may be running out. It's harder to do that on Zoom. And so you, there is a general more abrupt ending to public comments on Zoom. Um, and I think that maybe over time that has been misinterpreted as cutting people off intentionally, which is not the case. But I mean, again, that can happen in a dynamic setting such as Zoom and being in person and other people not being in person. There's also been concerns raised by members of the public. Um, that they have been either interrupted or cut off. And I think that um, a lot of that can be due to the inability of engaging with someone. Over a virtual setting. Again, in just terms of having a conversation of, you know, can you please stay within the, the realm of directing your comments to council? Um, and not, and, and not directing your comments to a specific individual. So there have been several of those instances enough. With individuals of the public raising concerns about um, that propensity for that over Zoom. That this is one of the other reasons why we're bringing it to the council for consideration. Again, the, the bottom line um, is that we're here to ensure that there's equal treatment across the board. And sometimes that is hard to monitor and ensure um, Zoom in a virtual setting. So one of the options is um, at this time is to limit that form of participation. For a limited, one potential could be restricting it for a limited amount of time. As a test run to see if that helps alleviate some of those specific issues. Um, other concerns or possibilities that we can talk about uh, with council input is. If the council would like to shift or change the way Zoom works. Um, we can do that as well. So for example, the, if the council is. Again, desirous of setting a trial period, we can work that language into the uh, protocol manual specifically. Another recommendation that we have, it could be to limit or to eliminate Zoom. Unless um, something, um, I, I won't say extraordinary, but something unique warrants it. So for example. Uh, when the city council has to take action on rate setting, on taxes. On specific zoning uh, requirements or projects that even under state law require extra noticing. So there, in some cases, there's like a twenty-day notice requirement for some zoning changes. Uh, there's the Prop two eighteen process that we have to go through. That might be one metric that the council can use in saying. For situations under those criteria, it would warrant using, going back to Zoom for, for those specific meetings. So that might be something else that the council could consider um, in looking at your internal policies. So we can craft it however the council wants. The idea was to open up a dialogue to see if. There's thoughts um, on how to address some of the concerns that I'd mentioned earlier. Again. The idea here is not to eliminate the public's uh, right to participation. The public still has the absolute right to observe the meeting. Um, it would still be uh, most likely allowed to be for viewing purposes. Uh, individuals are able to submit written comments leading up to the council meetings. And something else to note is that the laws that uh, were put in place. Um, to provide for remote participation, if a council member is also appearing remotely, still is in place. So um, I'll give you an example, just a few meetings ago. One of your council members had to appear remotely due to a family uh, uh, medical emergency. Under the law, uh, let's say you didn't have zoom as a as a possibility, we'd be required to provide zoom. Uh, for remote participation, so in essence, if a council member is participating from somewhere else. The public also has the right to participate from somewhere else, so there are safeguards in place. Uh, that that don't change, even if the council were to make changes to your protocol manual at this point today. So I think um, that covers generally the the big topics of of what staff is presenting for your consideration tonight. Um, I'm more than happy to answer in any questions specifically about the proposed changes. Or changes to state law following um, the enactment of um, S B seven oh seven, so I will, I'll defer to the council if there's any questions.
So I just wanted to quickly ask, there's what about the some mundane things that are in the manual that need to be changed?
I feel like those were, those are included.
I feel like we've sufficiently gone over the information in the staff report and now we can discuss it.
Things, okay, I happened to go page by page and I found some things that I think need to be updated, so. Did you want to go first?
I would love to, thank you, I mean, um, so um. Early oral communication is not a hill that I'm willing to die on, I really feel like. Like today, when we had people that came up that wanted to talk about the water tower or. Um, the fence, I think that's a really appropriate use of early oral communication and um. I appreciate those people that just wanted to come in and make those comments. And then leave and I think that was the spirit in which early oral communication um. Originated and um, you know, it's fifteen minutes and um, I'm. Perfectly fine with keeping it, um, you know. I've had a lot of reflection as I think we all have had, um, you know, since we knew that this was going to be agendized about zoom. Um, you know, I think it's, it's a really useful tool. I zoomed into a board of supervisors meeting yesterday because I had something that I wasn't. And I was about to go into a meeting, so I couldn't make it, so um, so I appreciate that, um, and I really appreciate. Um, all the feedback that I've gotten over email in the last couple of days, um, the conversations I've had with constituents that have, you know, a lot. Of different opinions on it and I really think um, you knew Bia for that presentation and um. You know, you were speaking of. You know, a test period to not have zoom, I think that what I would. Rather see is a test period in which, you know, now that we know what some of the issues have been if. You know, now that we're discussing it, if we could maybe use a time period to see if. We can all act the right way on zoom and then, you know, if the same. Things are continuing to come up again as far as, you know, people speaking twice or whatnot, then maybe we can revisit it. But I. You know, I I don't feel comfortable right now, just completely getting rid of zoom now. That we've, you know, stated what the issues are and that people know, so maybe. We can just put that back on public, that zoom, you know, is a really useful tool and if we want to keep it, then. Let's try not to abuse it.
So I'm thinking that there we have, or do you, we want to deal with each one of these items individually?
Yeah, and everything else I'm fine with.
Or do you want to take them all at once? And I'm thinking if we wanted to deal with it individually.
It's at the pleasure of the council, however you want to go.
I was thinking you could knock some of them off, like the first two, which are and and just get rid of those right away.
Well, oh, okay, but see, I I, why can't we just have the agenda at the library, it doesn't seem that hard. It seems helpful, I don't think that we need to get rid of that, I don't, I mean. Is it, is it like a lot of work for city staff, is it difficult to do, I mean, it just, again, more ways to access the agenda seems seems positive.
It hasn't been done in practice since before we had started as city clerk and, you know, notification, right now the agendas are widely available. On. The website, they're available at city hall, which is a short walk. If we don't eliminate that, I guess we could start posting it there, but we're just, again, it was a cleanup to reflect what we're doing.
I I concur, I mean, I I'll go put one over there if need be, I think it's just another place for people to go and look and. Also, not everybody has access to the internet and.
So where do they have, where do they have it in the library?
We'll find a place.
Cause maybe there's no place, they aren't doing it currently.
Well, and that's what I was wondering, cause I'm, I, that's the question I wrote, like, is it. Causing an issue or is it just, we're not doing it, so let's reflect what we're actually doing.
The latter.
And has that been requested by people before, like, do people come to the library and say, hey, what's on the city council agenda? Or are they redirected to city hall, I mean, I I understand that they're close together and that that's probably pretty easy, I'm just like curious of, yeah.
Nobody's requested that, again, it's a cleanup to reflect how we've been doing things, there's been no. Um, but nobody's saying they've had a hard time finding the agenda, again, it's just a cleanup and consistency effort.
So I was wondering again, if there's these items, if that's the case, can we just deal with one that we say?
You know, if the council wants to go through that list and get us, you know, a consensus or council or or.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I really feel like it's okay just to have a communication, you know, just a conversation about it and then. Put it out to public comment and then if we want to come back and go one by one, that might be an appropriate thing to do.
Just thinking how to make it easier because there'll be some things that are more controversial than others on here. Like the appeals board is not a controversial item, but could be. So.
So.
You're next.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna cover the ones that I um, are controversial. Um, I'm not gonna die on the library, but it would be, it's not the hill to die on, I guess, as you would say. Um, on eight point seven one, um, I feel like it is an equity issue, I think of. My older adult community out in Lazy Jay, they don't drive at night quite often and I want them to have access, I'm always for community engagement. Um, I want to make sure that um, we include everybody, the disabled, those who don't drive, those who don't want to spend the gas to come down here. Um, and as my uh, fellow council member pointed out, they zoomed in on a meeting for the board of supervisors. Um, I also do not want to eliminate the oral or um, early communications. I know that a lot of folks can't spend a lot of time down here, but they can come in, say what they need to say and go home. And um, that was it, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Stacy.
Um, I am initially, I mean, I, you know, I think I know what the public is here to say and I'm looking forward to hearing that. Um, uh, I think the big ones, I I'm kind of neutral on the library, I feel like if. It seems to be a bit of an outdated practice and that's why we're removing it, but if other council members want it, I don't have a problem voting for it, but. I also see why it's asking to be eliminated, um, so the two main ones, elimination of early oral communication, I think it's. Been said why that part is helpful, I do think we need to do a better job of explaining. If we're going to do it, it just has to be explained each and every time, tonight was a great example of new folks being in and not knowing. What not, what they were supposed to do with the numbers, so and also at the end of it, we we need to make it clear that there is another. Um, section at the end, so people don't think they're, so I'm fine to keep it if we're clear about it. And um, I get it with the zoom, I've thought a lot about it, um, this is. It's come up in the past, the problems that we're having and I've always um, advocated to keep it because I know it does. Allow people to attend when they cannot, I think that. The public needs to hear what's being said by our lawyers and why we're being recommended to not do it, and I think the burden goes back on the public of. Um, of just being respectful in the whole process, um, you know, we're, we're trying to provide. Lots of opportunities for people to communicate with us and. I, you know, it would, it would be a shame to have those taken away by people abusing, you know, those, some of the privileges, so. I think it falls back on the public if they want it to stay to use it properly, I think Meredith said it well and I think that's all.
Um, yeah, I I would agree, I think we definitely need to keep zoom, uh. Our city attorney appears via zoom, I mean, we have presenters that appear via zoom all the time because we are remote and far away from things and. If we're gonna need to provide that to various presenters and to our own attorney, then I think we should continue to provide it to the public, it's just kind of. Expected at this point and yes, it is something that was brought on, you know, by changes with with covid, but now, um, you know, I think that the majority of people. Expect it and just, you know, little semantics, things like, oh, we don't, we don't have thirty thousand people, so we don't need to do it, but. Um, it seems like, you know, that the state is making a a direction to have more opportunities like that. Um, and and then also just to that too, I think that, you know, um, to a little bit of what Meredith was saying, if we're seeing. You know, some of these issues, instead of just getting rid of it, why don't we work to solve some of them and, you know, I think. Um, something that we could do that would just make the process more streamlined too, like when. We're always asking the clerk like, oh, well, how many hands are raised, well, how many hands are not like, let's just give it some solid time and say, okay, everybody who wants to comment on zoom, please raise your hand now. And then we get that zoom queue going and we say, hey, we have eight commenters that are commenting via zoom, these are the eight commenters that we are taking. And then we take those and we can decide how long we want those comments to be based on the number of people. Like we can look at a line of people here, we can have a virtual line um, to kind of, you know, mitigate that. If that's, you know, what we're concerned about and to see those names and to just, you know, know how long it's going to take because there have been times, you know, where. All of a sudden, we think there's only going to be six comments and then hands start going up back and forth and maybe we do have extra. People jumping in that have already commented and it gets convoluted and so if we can, you know, make it cut and dry and say, okay, these people raised their hand, they're in line. These are the comments, um, you know, I think that would be something to try before totally getting rid of it, um, you know, or. Limiting overall time of communications, et cetera, um, I also wonder if it's, you know, I remember doing this when I taught on zoom. Uh, there's a timer, like, can we just put a timer up on zoom so they can see how much time they have left? Um, and then I want to definitely keep early oral communications, it's only fifteen minutes. It's again, like, it was perfectly utilized tonight, right, people coming, they just want to give that quick update or maybe there's an event happening or something that. You know, they're not totally engaged in the agenda, but they want a future item and they come and give that. Um, I do think we should redo the cards because I think um, what we've done. We used to do the first four and then go to zoom and if there was more time, right, again, confusing, we've been doing early oral, like, who's here in person, we're just gonna only do in person for that. And then so to make those cards like one through eight, instead of the green one through four and the yellow one through four and. I think people get confused again because it's not explained and that piece is inherently confusing, um, just with the different numbered cards. And so I think if we had one through eight, whoever gets those, you get in line, um, that'll make it more streamlined and easy as well. Um, and then. I just, I would like to maybe hear a bit more, talk a little bit more about this disturbance section and and, you know, Nubia's presentation made me, you know. See a little bit more where it's coming from the state and if that is something solid, that's like written in code and coming down. I just have some concerns and again, like, not to keep doing the teacher hat, but like, if you give an expectation. And then you don't enforce it equally, it goes really bad really quick. And so I just like had some questions because it says like the presiding officer, so is that the mayor or is that? You know, who is the presiding officer, they get to decide then what constitutes disruptive behavior? What if I don't agree that that's disruptive and they think it is and I don't, right, like, it it starts to create a lot more problems based on the vagueness of words like. Disruptive behavior and so, you know, if it's something coming down from the state and that gives us that nimbleness and it's it's clear and that's what state law wants us to adopt and do. I understand that, but I do have concerns just about how subjective it is and what constitutes disruptive behavior. And the decision making and choices of, you know, what the presiding officer gets to decide, so. Um, I know the mayor gets to run the meeting and we feel almost all on this diet, it's got to be the mayor and get to make those choices and stuff, but I think. You know, it it leaves a little up to be desired, so that's where I'm at, those, um, the rest of the basic, you know, fix ups and checks, I'm I'm happy to. Support those, but um, that's where I am on those.
So I think about oral communications, when I was on the council at one time, that's when we started it because we had.
We had a question from council member Schaefer and I just wanted to, you know, try to answer why we put that in there and maybe have Nubia respond to the legal part first, if you wouldn't mind. Mayor Stillman, um, really, you know, we had a couple of meetings that were disrupted. And, you know, we kind of struggled through, okay, what should our procedure be, and so when these new rules came in. It seemed like it would be an appropriate place to really make it clear, our goal is really to not have meetings disrupted, I mean. We put a lot of time and energy into our meetings and so what is that process and I would have loved to have something in the manual said, here's what you do, right, like, there's always subjectivity and we always have choices, but. You know, we ended up having recesses, we had challenges with the meeting still being disrupted, we recessed again. And so, you know, for those future councils or future staff people that are experiencing it, hey, here's what the law says on this. It's really a a last option and and the and the best option is for the mayor. And the presiding, who is, who presides over those meetings to really call for decorum. It's a tricky thing for one person to try to move through the agenda and monitor decorum and as I've talked about with some of the council members, you know, I think it really. The whole council needs to call for that point of order and decorum because the things that were happening that we've been seeing, certain speakers are supported, other ones are, you know. Booed or, you know, you you start to get a place where people don't feel safe. And what what we really want to do is have a respectful place where we can have that public dialogue and not have people feel like, you know, they're being supported or hated. You know, we want people to feel comfortable coming to our meetings and if we can't have that, we don't want to have meetings disrupted. You know, the the thought is if we give people a warning, they, you know, everybody leaves, look, we're serious about this, we need to maintain decorum. We can come back in if everybody wants to maintain, maintain decorum and I think usually that'll work again, um, to your comment, let's make that expectation. Expectation that this is a public meeting, we need to have that equal air and space and then the second piece would be like. If if we can achieve that, I don't want to count cancel our meetings, I, you know, that's, it's a tough thing to get everybody here, we've had people travel from out of town. We have people show up in person, but that's kind of a last resort, it's called a nuclear option, which is. Let's clear the room, let's have the press there, the meeting's accessible on YouTube, but if there's a large group here to disrupt, we've had enough meetings disrupted, I just really. Don't want to see our meetings disrupted and so the motivation was, let's put those ground rules in a place where they're visible by the public, so everybody understands, so it was. An effort to make that process known, so if we have to go there, which I hope that we don't, that it's clear to everybody. What that process would be. I don't know, Newbie, if you have anything else on that.
Yes, and I I think, I think to add a little bit to that is, um, I think to council member Schaefer's point is, you're absolutely right. They need to be applied equally and I think the challenge is without written guidelines in place. It makes it that much harder to enforce and you leave more room for the potential of not. Not treating disruptions evenly or equally. So to Meredith's point, I think this is our our attempt to try to put pen to paper and. Spell out some very specific scenarios and what the public can expect. Um, that process to look like, so that everybody's aware of the ground rules. Knowing full well that in the middle, in the midst of a uh, tense or difficult conversation. Um, it's much harder, obviously, because it's very dynamic and it's fluid, but at least this creates a framework. And this framework, it basically mirrors what state law provides for and it provides, as you can tell, it's part of the language. There's, there's the option for a subsequent warning, that's not required under law, you have to provide one clear initial warning. And then in order to leave and so, um, I think this is uh, the, our attempt to. Lay some ground rules in the hopes that I think to comments have been made by the council tonight, that the public recognize that. Well, we're all collectively trying to facilitate conversation, but not at the expense of making people feel unsafe. Or unwelcome or that their comments are um, not. Not valued or taken in the same way as as another person, it's for example, um, I know that the council's been really, really good about. Encouraging people to make their comments to the council. Because the problem is, once you have too much interaction with the public, then there are individuals who will feel like they're being attacked just for being there. And might have the impact of maybe not wanting to provide the comment that they were there to give. Or prevent them from coming to future meetings, so that's what the rules are in place, they're not there to restrict anything, it's actually to enable of a more free flow of. Communications and ideas, so again, yeah, that's the the basic framework for including this in the protocol manual.
So how do you feel?
I feel fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We keep it basic and keep it under state law, that's fine and I think though that, you know, it's important for. The the mayor, the presiding officer to be very familiar with this and understand what the steps are and be able to. You know, again, explain it to the public in a way that is is understandable because. If you're gonna hold somebody to an expectation or hold a group of people to an expectation, they need to know clearly what that is before, you know. Entering the space.
Could, could I ask a question or maybe it has been answered and I didn't hear it? But to your point of what someone's idea is disruptive might be different. But to your point of what someone's idea is disruptive might be different to another council person.
That's what, that's what she brought up.
So.
It's the mayor, like it'll be your call in a month, it's the mayor's call.
Then all bets are off.
No, well, I mean, I feel like it's called out right here, like disruptive behavior is any conduct that actually disrupts, disturbs, impedes or renders unfeasible the orderly conduct of a city council meeting included but not limited to the following, speaking without being recognized, you know, so it is, I mean, this is what it is. And then it's the mayor's discretion to say, this is happening, you know.
Right. I think where you get into a little bit more of the subjectivity, and that's exactly why that's something that we can't restrict. This disruptive behavior is defined does not say you can just, you can essentially cut someone off for being impolite or using bad words or, or, or speaking loudly as part of their presentation. The idea behind these four points, to try to define what disruptive behavior is, it's that it's essentially, what I've described meetings are, it's, it's a carefully orchestrated dance. And there's roles that people play in order to make this orchestra work. And so when you have individuals who just are desirous of, or maybe, you know, not intending to do it, do something that, that essentially disrupts that and, and cut it and make it harder to move forward in that progression, that's where these rules come into place. So that's why it's very, it's very limited, it's, it's not open-ended. And it's obviously not intended to, I think, protect against people's sensibilities. I mean, it's, it's an open forum and so we all have to, have to listen to things that might be uncomfortable or unpleasant.
Did that answer your question? Okay, so it's my turn? Okay, thank you. Okay, so as far as early oral communications, you know, I'm, I think a way I could see it is that we just have it for 15 minutes and we make it available to the people that come to the meeting and that we don't have cards. Just, and that we don't have Zoom in that. And that we have Zoom at the end of the meeting, if we're going to have oral communications with Zoom, it would be at the end. And that way people could come for, and not be cut off because they can just do with, they have 15 minutes, they know that, they can come and deal like, we have the people with the cell towers coming and they're really concerned about that. And we also have the people with the fence and it's been cut off and they come and talk to us about that. We've had other people come on other issues. And I think that would be appropriate for us to have that, that time and just for here for the council members to be addressed by those present. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
I, I actually, I really appreciated Sarah's idea about the cards. And we can't say, you know, you can only speak in the first 15 minutes if you want to talk about da, 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 but not if you want to talk about that. It's the first eight people that come up that get the cards. And I think that, I mean, that's.
So we just have eight cards and that's it?
Yeah. And then. Yeah, the colors are confusing. I was confused about the colors, yeah. No colors, because we're not gonna, you know, like we've been doing, no Zoom. No signs, when you come up to the dais.
Okay, are you ready to take public comment? Okay, public comment, please, for speaker.
Public comment on this issue, my name's Joanne McGary. I always say my name and you see my face. So I think those are important things when people are wanting to comment to the city council on issues is to say your name and see your face. So that can be done on Zoom for those who are not able to make it to the meeting. Lots of things I want to say, I actually raced back from the Bay Area today to attend this meeting. Ironically, I was considering calling in on a Zoom. And you know, I love to come to these meetings, but I was in the Bay Area and so I had to make a special effort to drive in the rain to get here to make a comment about this. So if people on the council can call in, people like me in the citizenry of Arcata should be able to call in on Zoom. And I've talked before about how the picture looks. So first of all, people want to call in, they should be willing to have their face seen and that'll deal with the double speak if you think somebody's speaking here in person and then goes and calls in. So, you know, I don't know why we're not showing people's faces when they're calling in and see if people aren't using their name. And, you know, I don't know, I mean, be brave and say what you want to say to, to our representatives here. There was a Human Rights Commission thing on free speech, hate speech. And it was really a worthwhile panel discussion from a couple of years ago. And I brought it to your attention at a meeting at that time. I think it's available on Access Humble. I think we all can benefit by really understanding free speech in the Bill of Rights that I brought, that I carry with me on occasion. And the power of three in this room of what we represent, the staff, the elected officials, the elected council members and the public podium. All of us are vitally important in what we have to say here in this room. And we need to be provided with that opportunity. Early communication, oral communication for issues that have come up today is really great. Ceremonial matters is what I really am wondering why we even bother with those. And we didn't do the land acknowledgement today and it's on the agenda. So, I mean.
Yes, we did do the land acknowledgement, we did.
The ceremonial matters can be done completely differently, not during city council time. And you could probably get more attention to the cause than you're doing now. So we really need to evaluate and disruptive behavior, back in November 15 of 2023, people had signs behind him and the council, legal councils had no signs. There's a sign behind me right now, I really object to. I don't want that sign there when I'm speaking.
Thank you very much, our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing our comments. I think that removing the restrictions on, I mean, removing Zoom and early comment would be a huge blow, not only to public engagement, but also, you know, to, to the Democratic Party. I mean, if, if this is a trend and it seems like, you know, these proposals are, are trending across our country. And I, I certainly hope that Arcata doesn't follow that. It seems like we're not going in that direction, which is a great relief to me. But, you know, it would disadvantage the people who are disabled the most and, and the most vulnerable among us. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, public engagement is, is really important in a democracy. I mean, I think we all know that. And certainly, I'm, I'm so glad to hear that the people on the council seem to be not interested in, in this particular proposal. But it also is very concerning that some of the comments that we've heard from the mayor, that the, the majority of Zoom calls are for Gaza and that this is part of the, the interest in, in removing the Zoom calls. You know, I, I don't think that that's very constructive. And, you know, it's really unfortunate too, because people are going to remember these sorts of things. You know, and, and I really just hope that we can, we can find ways to come together for, for the things that really matter to our, our local community. And, and certainly, you know, Gaza is an international issue to some degree, but it's also a local issue. You know, our money is being taken from, in, in the form of taxes and is being given to Israel. What, 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 you know, we don't have very many choices over that, right? We, we can call our national representatives, call our state representatives, they're not listening. You know, you guys, you can, you can actually listen. And, you know, so we, we can have, you know, some of our money through the humanitarian work, that, that projects like, uh, uh, Red Peace and Justice Coalition, or Sister City, and we can have that money actually go towards the people that are being bombed, you know, to, to actually live a, a little bit more dignified life. And, and so, you know, I, I just really hope that we can move in, in this direction of, of having more community engagement and, and more dialogue and discourse between the people who care about Palestine and, and the people who, who are representatives. Just, I really appreciate that and I look forward to, to that. I think that we are moving in that direction.
Thank you very much, next speaker, please.
Hello, I actually had a chance to speak with the mayor briefly during the little break. I'm glad to hear that the council members are more in favor of keeping Zoom. Because as much as sometimes I've been in meetings and some of the Zoom members I adamantly disagree with, they still have a right to, to free speech and to tell us what they think and to just have emails before things like that. As much as it is included in the notes, I don't think it has the same impact because people wouldn't be here if the emails had the same impact as voicing our opinion. And so I'm glad to hear that the other council members agree with that. The mayor did briefly say that she doesn't agree with that or was open-minded to not having Zoom. And as you stated, there's council members that do use Zoom, so I think it's equal. And I parrot the other people that 11,000 more people and we would be legally have to do it. So why not still keep it? Given that a couple of weeks ago, if this meeting was a couple of weeks ago, I wouldn't be able to come here because I have a broken foot. And, and that's a minor disability for a lot of people. And, and any of us could become disabled at any time and not be able to do our jobs in any realm. So Zoom really lets access be available to everyone. And then as someone else said, having a choice to having a face on Zoom would eliminate people having double speech. And if the abuse is our concern and restricting it, you're restricting more people by not offering it. So you're sort of just in a circle of, of restricting people in our speech. Otherwise, everything else, keeping public comment and early comment is, is valuable. And I agree with other council members, thank you.
Thank you very much, next speaker, please.
Hi there, my name is Rick Toledo. And on this, I'm speaking as a representative of Students for Democrat Society and also of the Humble Anti-War Committee. I did want to comment also on an email correspondence that I saw from Mayor Stillman. I, I believe Sean had kind of touched on it before, but I think it's important to talk about it because it did mention that most of the Zoom comments are about Gaza. And, you know, we've all heard it here tonight already as well. A lot of people with disabilities are also needing to use Zoom. And I think, is it really so crazy to think that people who are suffering from disabilities or people who are struggling with poverty or people, just regular working people who are having a really hard time are able to relate with another people that are suffering very greatly on their tax dollars? I don't think that's all that crazy, I think it's something that should be viewed. I think if there's so many people bringing this up, and especially if it's people who are some of the most vulnerable that are, are commenting on this, I think it's something that should be addressed. And I know, you know, in the same email, it said, people think that Arcata can change this, it can't. Well, Arcata can adopt a sister city, you know, Arcata can take real actions. And, you know, I'm grateful that that letter was sent to Calpers and I think more things like that can happen. Those are things that are in our power at the city level. And I think it's important that people are able to talk about those things. I think there were some, you know, real concerns brought up about the Zoom option. But if we were to cut it off completely, it would only take it away from so many people who do not have the privilege to be here in person, who would love to, who really deserve to have their voices heard as well. So I'm glad to hear as well that a lot of people seem like on the council, that they do not want that. I think that's the right direction to maintain Zoom. And I also would just say that when it comes to the early comment, I think we should definitely keep that. I liked the idea about having the letters on the cards and being very clear about the process. This was my first time commenting at this city council in person. So I got a little confused at the beginning. So I do think that would be really helpful for people because I was kind of lost with the card thing as well. Yeah, and I, I think that's everything I needed to say, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please. Thank you.
Cancel again, and I was going to make a big wrong comment and then I realized that you've already discussed and you want to keep a couple of comments, but I do want to make a comment about this myself. I think we should encourage people to be involved in local government. And you have something here that says that also. So I think that by actually encouraging people to be involved in our government is very important. And I also want to say, you guys were voted into your job, okay? You, you are not our boss, all right? Let me put it that way, we are your boss, you need to listen to us. You need to listen to public comment. And please remember, you're not royal, you are not royalty. You need to listen to us or else we're going to get further and further into authoritarianism. And you might laugh at me and say, oh, my God, that's not true, but it is. Our country has been going right incrementally and you don't even notice it. So please allow us to have public comment and don't be authoritarianism, thank you.
Thank you very much, next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tersha Murphy and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this agendized item, is that correct? This is an agendized, okay. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that the Zoom is going to be kept intact. I would be really disappointed if the city went along with limiting people's input, not, not talking about participation via listening to what people are saying here in the meeting, but actually being able to come in and, and talk about what we feel strongly about. And I, I do remember some of the language as this person up here was laying out the, the, some of the ideas, was to limit the time for speaking towards the end of the meeting and putting the agendized items and the other items together and then limiting that to 15 minutes. It just sounds like a lot of limiting and maybe I misunderstood what she was saying. But I think if that's the case, I, I would be very much against that. I think we're coming into, we're, we're at a, a very critical time in history where we are right on the verge of World War III. We are occupied by another state and a lot of our tax dollars, 60% of our tax dollars are going to wars that we shouldn't be fighting. And I think there's going to be a lot of reason for public comment. And I, if anything, I think we should be making room for more because this will not change from the top down, it's got to be from the bottom up. And I appreciate that we have a chance to speak here about the things that we feel strongly about. And I hope that that continues and there's no limits to that. And I also believe that there is some, some actors that are trying to limit the speech that we do in terms of not exposing Israel and what's going on in Israel, what Israel is doing. I tie that in with a lot of things because a lot of our free speech is getting stepped on in this country, our right to assemble, our free speech. And a lot of it has to do with Israel and, and them wanting to go in and, and get their greater Israel by bombing and killing people not only in Gaza and the West Bank, but in Lebanon, in Iran. I think this is a time that is so critical that we have the ability to come in and talk about what's going on because the mainstream media definitely doesn't cover it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, next speaker, please.
Oh, hey, you guys recognize me, I'm sure. Y'all know the hat and the, the silly shirts and the flags and all of that. Going forth with banning Zoom is a load of shit. Any way you slice it, by definition, there will be people who cannot get here under any circumstances that will be censored entirely. You can talk about, oh, disruptions and there have been problems on Zoom. Again, you guys recognize me, I've been here, been coming here for a while. All the worst disruptions that I've seen by far have been in person, easily, from the very beginning. One of you had to shout me out the stand my first time here. It's just, Zoom is not where these issues are coming out. There are a couple of other reasons, let's see if I can remember them. Number one, we've heard about the email that has been put around. I've, I've been here a long time, I'm very sleepy. We've heard about the email that's been put around, there's some problems there. We're getting rid of Zoom because of COVID, we're three years past it. I don't know about that, that seems kind of fishy. Why are we getting rid of Zoom now of all times? It's been quite a while since the end of the pandemic. On top of that, you guys will be shooting yourselves in the foot, you really will. Most of the opposition to all of this, they call in on Zoom. I've, I've been here a little while, I've seen it. A lot of older folks who can't come out here all the time or who don't have the time to, they call in on. A lot of older folks who can't come out here all the time or who don't have the time to, they call in on Zoom. The excuse you guys have, being like, oh, there are some of our constituents that say they are not on to this, so we are not going to support it, will vanish if you don't have Zoom. I've come to recognize some of the players on the opposition and a lot of them really don't show up here regularly. It's just, it's been my observation. You guys are going to lose out if you do it. There will be nothing standing in the way of why is this not happening? I don't, I'm not prepared to talk a lot about the different methods of how are we going to police this and all of that. You know, I'm a meathead, clearly. That's just above my pay grade. Some of it sounds good. There are experts who tied that, that you should listen to, banning it outright. It's going to cause problems for everybody. I would not be on board with it. Especially if I were you guys, because I know that you've had to hear a lot of things, take a lot of abuse maybe. But that just means that those who are going to do that are going to come here. You'll have to see them face to face. You guys should not support this. Sister City, all of that, y'all know what you have to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, counsel. Hey, getting rid of Zoom, bad idea. Come on. I think almost all of you realize what a really, really bad, anti-democratic look that would be. Not just a bad move, but it would really make you guys look bad. We want you to look good. We love the stuff that you do for the city. Keep doing it. I want to say, I can't stick around for later comments, so I want to say that when you delayed the water bill increase for the sake of the people of the city, that was one of the most humane acts I've ever seen the city council do. And I applaud you for it. Amazing. Keep that view of helping the people and using our resources to help the people of Arcata. And listen to what we're saying. If you're saying there's so many people calling in about Gaza that you don't want to listen anymore, that seems to me like it means it's a really important issue to the people of the city. So we should be paying extra attention to that, maybe not less attention. But I will say this, that I think the problem with the Gaza City is you should have taken a vote a long time ago. And that we've wasted a lot of time. I'm really happy that the new sister city guidelines are being prepared. And once we have a fair, reasonable way to judge what is a reasonable sister city project, then you can decide yes or no. We can move on and help more people here in Arcata. Because that really is the thing that you guys are the best at and we should be enabling you to do. So if we can move on past some of these other issues just by taking a vote on it, vote yes, vote no. That's your right. We respect that, but we want to move on to other business. We have lagged this on for months and months and months and months without even bringing things to a vote. So to remove Zoom, I just want to say, last week, I couldn't be here because I had a medical procedure to prepare for the next morning. I had a colonoscopy. I was on the toilet when I called in last time. And if I hadn't called in, there would have been nobody to defend my family and Palestinians against the hateful white supremacists that showed up in your face last meeting and talked about how Palestinians don't exist and how we are not, there's no starvation in Gaza and such horrible things. So like, if I couldn't zoom in, nobody defends me or my family in this hall. So I have to come in. And I have young kids. I can't bring them to these meetings because of the horrible things that are said about them and their culture. And I can't always make the time to come in because I have to care for them and make dinner and get them ready for school and do all the things that normal parents and kids have to do. So to remove Zoom would be a tragedy and a horrific look for the council.
Thank you very much for your comment. So our next speaker, please. Please come forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Gomez. I live here in Arcata. And I just came to represent some of the people that aren't here because they probably can't be because they might be disabled or not have a ride or not be able to get here for whatever reason or another that would like to call in on Zoom. Seems like everybody appears in agreeance that we should still have Zoom comments and that's a good thing. So that's what I'm here to support, that keeping Zoom and keeping comments from the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, Kevin Johnson. I have three points to make about some of these things. I'm getting close to 70 years old and my spouse and I use Zoom a lot. And I think it's an important thing to keep. It gives a voice to older Arcadans who don't necessarily come into council meetings. So I think it's really an important thing to keep and have it work efficiently. You know, sometimes there's glitches with it. I think that that should be improved. It's worth it to keep it going and running efficiently and having it work. As far as early oral communications, I think it's really important to keep that also. You know, I live right on the edge of town. And for me to come, if I have an issue that's not on the agenda, to come in, you know, I'll have to wait till 10 or 11 o'clock to do that. And so, plus you have to, you know, I drive a couple of miles. I still live in the city of Arcata, but I still have to drive a couple of miles. So in terms of driving, you know, it's like Zoom is better. Early oral communications gives people an early chance and gives them a voice. Over the years, I've observed many issues in this council chamber. A lot of them, you might, you know, some people might call unruly. I call them emotionally charged. And I'm not talking just the last couple of years. I'm talking 20, 25 years. And so I think you should be very, very careful in overregulating people's speech and overregulating the process with like rules in this. It's worked really well all these years and there's been in the past just as, quote, unruly citizens that are emotionally charged today as there were 25 years ago. So I really think that, you know, you don't want to overregulate this process. This is a democratic process. It's messy. It's what it's, you know, supposed to be messy. And I think that most people do feel, actually, I would, I've never felt, I've never encountered anybody in the public that feels unsafe or threatened. I do see council members, you know, uncomfortable a lot. And I think that's just part of the job. And I think that, you know, you need to listen to everybody and not overregulate the system so that people don't feel like their voice can be heard.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jay Smith. And I'm heartened to hear that multiple members of the council would like to retain the Zoom public comment. And I just want to give my comment. So I'm removing remote access to public comment at city council meetings, hinder civic participation and local governance. And hindering civic participation is not, it is not democracy to hinder civic participation. It is authoritarianism and censorship, especially if you're doing it in response to comments on Zoom that are pertaining to Gaza, especially if they're not disruptive nor inflammatory, but just speaking the truth and people's sentiments and giving meaning and nuance to this dialogue that we have here. If inclusion means anything, it means that those without access to transportation and those who are experiencing other mobility issues such as myself, those who may be elderly, experiencing illness, any type of condition or issue that makes it hard for them to show up, can still have their voice heard by all of you. And you do do really great work for this city and I do appreciate it and recognize that. And it's important that all of us are still able to address the local council at meetings just like this. It's very important, whether we're here in person or on Zoom. I appreciate the opportunity so much and the right to, the privilege to listen to everyone who spoke today. In these times, we need people to be more engaged in local politics. And if you choose to close remote access at the end of all of this, all of these discussions and everything, or take other measures to hinder communication opportunities between the public and local governance, you're closing the door on people that this city is, you know, supposed to welcome and accommodate and include. And I urge you to retain remote public commenting and with tested and streamlined solutions for productivity and fairness all around across all formats. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jade. I came here today to speak on this issue. And I myself, the place that I'm living has a curfew, so I'm actually out past my curfew. And this is just one, another example of people who may not otherwise be able to participate if Zoom was, if Zoom was not an option. I echo with what someone else said, that anybody can become temporarily or permanently disabled at any time. So even if you feel like, oh, like, you're not thinking about accessibility, it may become an issue for you at some point and you just never know. And I think when it comes to issues of decorum and people double speaking, I think that there are, and it's already been discussed, like there are very simple measures that could be put in place that would really help streamline that process and make sure that everyone who's coming into the space, whether in person or on Zoom, is educated. It can be written in very simple language. It can be posted. It can be shared on the website. And I don't think that that, that there would be any issue with that. And I do, I do think that simplifying the cards would be a good idea as well. Definitely want to advocate for continuing the oral comments at the beginning. And yeah, I just, I totally agree that the more, the more opportunity for public comment, the better. And you are public servants, right? So that is, that is, that is your role as elective representatives, as public servants. And so to just, I think this is an opportunity to really come back to your own role and say like, you know, what drew me to this job actually? What is my role? And to actually flip the script and ask yourself, like, how can I better serve the community, right? And we're telling you, you know? And people are just saying, please listen, please listen. And that, that really is your job. And I think that if you can, you can, if you can open your heart and see yourself as a concerned citizen, as I'm sure you are, otherwise you wouldn't be in this role, right? You know? Yeah.
Thank you very much for your comment. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
So it sounds like most of this board has sort of followed the same opinion of wanting to preserve public comment, wanting to preserve Zoom. I fully support that. I strongly oppose any change in regards to the limiting of public comments or the removal of virtual comments. Just because you're not legally required to do something like Zoom calls doesn't mean that they're not useful. And back in the day, government buildings weren't legally required to have wheelchair ramps or interpreters for ESL clients, but we can all agree that those have been beneficial to our society and that has allowed people to participate when they were not able to previously. There are parents in this town who have young children who can't afford to be out of the house at almost 10:00 PM on a Wednesday night. There are disabled people. There are students. There are people who work shifts beyond your average nine to five. There are so many legitimate reasons individuals can't be here in person to comment, but that doesn't mean the policies that they're commenting on affect them any less. We need to expand people's ability to engage in politics, not reduce it. Civic participation is the cornerstone of democracy. And limiting people's ability to participate because you are not legally required to is the antithesis of that. And I also want to remind this council that a lot of this is in regards to the meeting back in August that was so chaotic for so many people involved. The reason that that meeting was so chaotic is because people showed up in droves feeling that they were not allowed to comment publicly on an issue that was very personal and controversial to them.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
May we look at the time? It's 9:45. How many people here, how many people in Arcata has the ability to stay in city hall, listening for well over three hours? Not a lot of people. There are students, there are students and wage workers who have to wake up early each morning. So already, the nature of these types of discussion limits a huge amount of people. So by reducing Zoom, by eliminating Zoom comments or by eliminating online comments on Zoom for the early comment section, you are already eliminating a large part of the constituency. That is my only argument. Maintain Zoom and early comments. It's very important for the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers present that would like to speak on this item? And do we have people on Zoom? Thank you.
Yes. Right now, we have eight hands raised. Call in user one, please go ahead. Call in user one, please unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening. I am Fred Wise. I want to commend the members of the city council for rejecting the proposal to eliminate Zoom and phone-in comments. As you clearly noted, this would have had the effect of disenfranchising people who want to be involved in Arcata's governing. So thank you for your clear-headed decision on this issue. I know all of you are caring people. You care about Arcata and you care about the people of Arcata. It baffled me that getting rid of Zoom and phone-in comments was even being considered in the staff report and the input from the city attorney. You are able to put yourselves in other people's shoes. I see this again and again. And when you are no longer on the city council and you want to be involved and offer your views to a future city council, you will want to have the ability to speak to the council by Zoom, I'm sure. Couple of items. The early oral communications, you will want to consider increasing this to three minutes and make it equal to all the other communications. This will add to the time. You may have to have 20 minutes instead of 15 minutes. I'll leave this up to you to discuss. The other item I wanted to bring up was to alert the council to what appears to be yet another in a long string of violations of California's Brown Act. The agenda item on this issue is listed as, quote, "Review and approve revisions to the city officials' protocol manual." This says nothing about the substantial changes of how public comment will be handled. Very specifically, in the Brown Act, by law, the agenda item should not be written as an attempt to mislead or deceive the public. The public should not be required to read the staff report to understand what the agenda item is. And the law says, where it would be not much effort to provide a clear and understandable description. If that's not done, it's considered by the court as a violation of state law. This is not a matter of my opinion. This is a law. The court has ruled on it multiple times. I asked the council to have the city attorney or me provide guidelines so that these Brown Act violations will stop. For more on this, you can see arcataone.com website or give me a call. On a personal note, I did not know, realize the importance of this issue on the agenda because it doesn't say anything on the actual agenda about what you're talking about here. Again, thank you for your decision and thank you for your service to Arcata.
Thank you very much. So do we have several people on Zoom or do we, how many do we have?
There's seven hands raised right now.
Okay, so we'll take seven people. Okay. Thank you.
Mario, please go ahead. Mario, I see that you're unmuted. Can you try talking?
Okay, good. Yeah. Good evening, counsel. Mario Fernandez, Humboldt County Democrats Chair. And much like everyone else here tonight, this is about the Zoom accessibility. And it's true that there's no legal requirement per Senate Bill 707, signed in October. Though, we're all aware that legal doesn't equate to moral. Just because it's equal doesn't mean that it's equitable. And while we've heard, you know, folks highlight that council and staff are willing to work with folks unable to attend, such as those that are disabled or those that are impoverished in some way, this doesn't remove the barriers and further disadvantages vulnerable communities and instills a restrictive environment for those unable to attend. Whether or not the comments are related to global matters with- Whether or not the comments are related to global matters with no impact on the city is a subjective matter that speaks to the privilege of being out of touch with the times and interconnectedness of the communities outside of your comfort. Enough time has passed that the virtual accessibility is the status quo, and while there may be a yearning for simpler time, the world and our communities are complicated places, and this should lead you to ponder whether your leadership is timely and relevant. As a twenty-first century city housing an institution of higher education, you should all be striving for accessibility and working to be better adjusted to handle the passionate public feedback. Ultimately, from my perspective, the choice here tonight is to be secluded, petty, archaic, and willfully ignorant, or open, accessible, relevant, and progressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Divest, please go ahead.
I wrote a lot. Let's see. This lengthy section on taking away the public's remote public comment option occurs for me as a waste of the public's time and attention that we've invested here on behalf of an agenda that does not serve the public good with legal mumbo jumbo and/or even lawfare, meaning the use of legal systems and institutions to achieve political objectives. Perhaps to keep the mayor and this city council or members of it running interference for our government's crimes of stealing our worker tax dollars, to subsidize weapons and fund apartheid and genocide of Palestinians, and then the importation of those Israeli criminal apartheid and occupation tactics here in the US, which is happening now, to an ever-growing swath of people now subjected to state violence, even disappearances and/or extrajudicial killings. This is the emergency that we, the public, have been sounding the alarm on, that you mischaracterize grossly as disruptive or hateful rather than respectful. Government is for the people, period. Use of City Hall for bureaucratic or legal hurdles put in the path of our people, that is to say, your constituency, your boss is unacceptable and adds to the increasing authoritarianism. This burden is not on the public. This burden is on the city council and mayor. And just one example, members that have been abusing this office to fuel racism and vigilante violence that has even targeted my Palestinian kids on more than one occasion in this community, as well as has resulted in six hundred and eighty thousand minimum dead people in Gaza alone in two years. That was as of July, so it was under two years count. Being, more are being killed right this second. This public is putting a lot of energy into showing up and is being ignored. You said respectful place? You are not serious people. You have this like, I don't know, you've like normalized danger in this council chamber fomenting racism against people, including my children here, even trying to sow the seeds of racial segregation by trying to forward to the police that my kids are going to be doing art for Palestinian kids, martyrs, that they're going to be in the plaza trying to keep them out or surveil them with police? The fact that you are absurdly and garishly trying to frame Zoom comments is some big deal when in fact you're ignoring making Palestinians and Arabs and Muslims unsafe by mobilizing supremacists to viciously smear them as the state exterminates them there and abducts them here? That's not a free flow of ideas. It's thinly veiled cover for let us use our genocidal Zionist proxies to do our incitement to genocide for us in this chamber while we wait two years to even platform the topic of divestment, which is law of the land per the International Court of Justice twenty twenty-four ruling. But you pers- you protectors of Jim Crow supremacism and extermination of an entire people while?
Thank you very much for your comments. And our, our third speaker, please.
Lisa, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to log in with my dismay about this proposal to diminish the community's accessibility to you, our council, our representatives. Public comment is not just about you hearing about what is on your community members' minds, such as a cell tower or the limited access between Highland and golf course. It is about the community's ability to also hear the concerns and going-ons within our town. To provide fifteen minutes of comment in the beginning of your meeting could not possibly be a hardship for the council, and I would suggest that it be increased. But to eliminate this, you would knock out a whole population of your community who will not come out at ten or eleven at night to come to speak about something that is on their mind about our town. The same goes for Zoom. Increased accessibility is a good idea. Elders, those who do not drive, those who do not want to drive late at night or in poor weather, those who are sick, those who have children, those caring for others, those who work in the evening, those who are disabled or unable to attend in person for whatever reason. You will lose all of these voices if you eliminate Zoom. Also, many computers like mine do not have a camera, so requiring video would not be a good idea. It would be discriminatory. In this eh, day and age and this time in the political climate, I feel that the act that you are considering will only result in an enhanced sense of disempowerment of a community that already feels invalidated and powerless in an increasingly unstable and frightening world.
Thank you for your comments. Speaker number four, please.
Amy, please go ahead. Amy, please unmute yourself.
Hi, um, it's me again. I think everyone's done a really great job at addressing um, the discriminatory practice of eliminating Zoom. Um, again, I'm a social work student here at Cal Poly. Um, I have a really trying internship and I also am on the Board of Organizations and continue to uh, support my community as much as I can. And so being able to use Zoom so I could maybe make dinner and feed myself to do all of these things um, is really uh, a gift. Um, it's also a gift as community member to get to hear everyone else and what they have to say. Um, you know, times are scary, but I, you know, I, you know, I don't think anyone's really celebrated um, the huge win that um, we had yesterday, the blue wave that brought in um, a great, uh, I mean, I don't know if you guys follow different states' politics, but Mamdani, M A M D A N I, who demonstrated that um, we don't have to shift further away from our values. We can support trans rights, we can support Palestine, we can support these forces for good, and we can do so by demanding affordability, by demanding accountability for our representatives, and by um, demanding our right to live in a world that actually serves the most amount of people we possibly can. And that means um, providing as much accessibility as we can. If you want to talk about change and like not wanting there to be change, um, then maybe you shouldn't be in office anymore. Uh, the fact is that the world is changing and hopefully it's changing in um, ways where we can see uh, how so much have been, so many have been harmed and so many have been isolated and made to feel less than. And we can help give each other more platforms to speak from and support each other. Um, it's time for light and love and to uh, uh, really try to remember that we are on stolen native land and um, that there's no reason for any gatekeeping whatsoever, like a rising sea brings uh, rise, uh, whatever the phrase is, I'm tired. Um, anyhow, support one each other, one another. Um, oh, and what some person thinks is safety is not safety for everyone. So when you're talking about uh, disruption, that is absolutely subjective. I don't care how many rules you lay out to it. Um, Mario said it really well when he said that um, we need to uh, be able to have thicker skins when we're in these public, public offices. Um, and, and when you're hearing passionate individuals.
Thank you very much for your comments. And now we'll go on to speaker number five.
Ellen, please go ahead.
Hello, council. I am calling you um, from Zoom because I'm one of your many community members who finds this much more accessible than attending in person. Um, I know you discussed this, but I want to talk about the fact that I received this really odd response from Mayor Stillman today to my email expressing my opposition to these changes. In my email, I explained that the option for remote attendance is an accessibility issue, and yet the mayor responded saying how most of the Zoom comments are about Gaza, which of course, in her opinion, Arcata can do nothing about. This response exposed the real reason the council is proposing these changes because it is run by Zionists and they're tired of hearing so many pro-Palestine comments from their community. To be clear, the vast majority of the comments have been asking the city to do things that are within its power. And in fact, the city has taken several of these actions, which have cost exactly zero dollars. I will also note that I do often comment to counter some of the vile anti-Palestinian racist hate speech we hear spewed into this chamber by the local Zionists. Because remember, Palestinians live here in Arcata, including children. They are certainly one of the smallest minorities in the region, and they deserve to feel safe here as much as anyone else does. Interestingly, I see a lot of the same Zionist hate speech that I hear at the meetings written in Councilmember Matthew's emails in which she thanks the racists profusely for their statement and encourages them to send it to her fellow councilwomen. This is public record. You can request them from the city clerk and read for yourself. The quote, "We can't do anything in Arcata for Palestine" sentiment, which Alex parroted back to me today, is also a common Zionist talking point in these emails. So I asked the other council members, "Do you want to be a Zionist-controlled entity?" Remember, Zionism is a colonial project based on dispossession, genocide, and apartheid. Does this reflect your ideals? If not, you must vigorously push back against these proposed changes and anything similar. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and speaker number six.
Marissa, please go ahead.
Uh, hello, everyone. I want to say thank you to my community members and all the great comments this evening. I am an environmental engineer and I work remotely till ten thirty PM managing a fleet of uh, generators. So having the ability to attend the meetings over Zoom and have the ability to have public comment over Zoom is really empowering to me as an individual, but also really important for all of the accessibility and justice reasons that my community has laid out this evening. Um, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, I hear council do a land acknowledgement, and then we started about, you know, then, then there was discussions on items for how to support our elderly community members or our unhoused community members who have been systemically disadvantaged. Um, and I think that comes from a belief of wanting to help people in our community and that uh, removing the ability to give comments over Zoom is directly in conflict with that. So if those are your values, please think about how this uh, aligns with that. Um, I do am thankful to hear that the council member has, council has been favorable to not uh, making this change after this discussion this evening. Um, and lastly, I want to say that uh, we definitely should be in support of being a sister city with Gaza and that there is, like people have mentioned tonight, there's a lot that we can do as uh, a city and show our solidarity and support to our human family. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much for your comments and our last speaker will be number seven.
Jude, please go ahead. Jude, it looks like you've unmuted yourself. Can you please try talking? Um, Jude, I'm asking you to unmute. I see that you muted yourself.
So do you think the speaker is unable to uh, join us?
I have them unmuted and, and I'm not hearing any audio.
Okay, well then I assume that that speaker is not available at this time. So we've concluded our meeting, our Zoom participation. So I just want to go over a couple of things. I want to see where we stand as agreement. And one, closing, I could say we're closing public hearing, but in that we all agree that we're going to do number one, boards and permit and?
Yeah, do you want to take, make motions separately? Cause I'm happy.
Well, I wanted to ask them questions, but if you want to go ahead and then I will bring it up during that comments. I want to know, do we want to keep oral communications at the very beginning of the meeting at two minutes or three minutes? If we do, and do we want to keep it at fifteen minutes or do we want to make it um, longer?
I think, I just want to keep it the way it is.
To keep it the way it is, but change the cards. I love that idea.
Okay, fine. I just wanted to make.
And just for clarity.
We had other suggestions about making it three minutes versus two. The other thing I wanted to ask is the oral communications at the end of the meeting, do we want to have that at three or at two?
I think that's, that gets to be up to the discretion of the mayor and, you know, can be dependent on, again, when we get to check, how many speakers do we have? If we have fifty people that want to talk, then maybe we're going to limit that to one, one minute or two minutes or a minute and a half, whatever, but I think.
So I want to.
May it be in both.
Okay, I'm going to ask one other question. So when we have a public comment on our agenda items, do we want to keep that at three minutes or two minutes? I'm just bringing this up.
Discretion on the mayor.
Okay, for all of that. Okay. I just want to make sure. And so at this time, we are in agreement that we're going to have our early oral communications and we will have eight speakers with cards and that we will have uh, late communications and it will be at discretion of the mayor, two, three minutes or whatever it might be.
I also um, appreciated Sarah's idea um, for Zoom is taking the numbers of the hands that are up and saying, all right, there is ten hands up, those are the speakers that we're taking.
And that's just what I did. I asked for.
Yeah, no, that was perfect. That was great.
So we, so we don't have all, you know, people popping up later. Okay, and so what about disturbances? Um, the last item, addition procedures regarding disturbances. How do you all feel about that?
I think, I mean, I think it's, it, it's fine how it's written. I mean, to, tonight was a great example of how it doesn't really matter how it's written. Uh, there's discretion that is used, you know, I mean, if you know, we, we use discretion this evening. We didn't follow the protocol manual. Amendments minus amendments minus, does that work for you? Okay, uh, minus the amendment to section eight point seven point one, public comments during the meeting and um, amending section eight point nine, section seven, oral and written communications, early time limited. And moving forward with the other one, two, sorry, three, four, five things, yes.
Someone asked one other question. Somebody suggested that uh, during oral communications on Zoom, that they uh, put their face up on the?
No, no, no. I'd second Sarah's motion.
Okay, I'm just asking questions.
And one point clarification for the, the council on that, on that issue, um, by law, we cannot require any individual to give their name whether it's in person um, or online. There is a requirement, there is now the additional requirement, the city could uh, re- require someone if they want to join via Zoom, they have to register for Zoom. But that, as you can tell, doesn't guarantee that you actually will get names that are, are accurate. Um, so there is no real way to police the name issue.
Well, that's good clarification and thank you for the people that suggested that we have their faces up, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's good. So we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on it? Kimberly? Oh, okay. All right, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Meredith, second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I seconded.
It's been seconded.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, aye.
I said aye first, but aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. She's saying aye several times so that we got it. Okay. All right, so where do we want to go next? We're going to go on to um, we finished that, now we're going to go on to oral and written communications. And the city council values your comments and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Figures will be limited three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. And how many people do we have on? We'll start with, yes.
May I proceed?
Yes, you may.
I think uh, we, we have the speaker speaking.
You spoke at the beginning. You spoke.
No, I, all I said at the beginning is there are a lawyer on, online, a present. That's what I, point of order. If you want to limit me, that's really interesting because I just wanted to know if a lawyer was here.
Yes, and you. Yes, and you've, you've watched her.
Shall I speak or not?
I think mayor, uh, so to Joanne's point, she wasn't making public comment during early public communications. She was asking a point of order question, which is separate, which is, which is distinct. So she hasn't essentially. Used up her, her non-agendized public comment time.
So would you, please repeat.
I'm really tired because I drove through rainy weather. It was scary uh, to get back up here to speak in person. And I totally appreciate how people want to present themselves. And they aren't required to say their name, they aren't required to show their face. Um, I feel it's important to me to show that I care about our community. And I care about a lot of things that we discuss here in the community and I just want to also um, bring this little prop up again. To show how everything's connected. Um, and I know I do it all the time, but repetition is a good thing. And so what happens here is really important. What happens over there is really important. To us because it's connected. Money spent over there to kill people. And uh, our needs here in this community to support people that need money. So, nothing is off limits when it comes to local discussion. On what the needs of our community are, whether they involve people in our community. Or people elsewhere in the world. So I just want to say that. One day, everyone will have always been against this, is a name of a book and I'm rereading it. And one day, everyone will have always been against what has occurred in Gaza. And Palestine in the last two years, in the last seven decades. We did a wonderful thing. It took a lot of time and energy and it caused a lot of angst and anger and animosity. I got, um, I was made aware of some hate uh, speech toward me. About um, my advocacy for a ceasefire by a council member. So. I just want to say that a lot of things have been said about the importance of public. Participation, just reiterating that. I mean, I. I'm so glad actually, these topics are coming up because it's really important that they be said out loud. And I know people's seats for city council are up for um, up and you know, I hope new people will run for office. Um, it won't be me. Um, the other thing I really think to old people, we really need a council of elders. The indigenous people of the world often have a council of elders. So I'd really like us to consider that maybe as a new year concept. Um, older elders and a council of people non-voting. But who are here to offer insight from their experience. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Teresa Murphy and I appreciate the opportunity to. Talk about the sister city. I support that. I support signing the Calpoli's letter and I'm not sure. Sounds like maybe some other people may have signed that since I last heard. Um, if you did, I thank you. I thank you Stacy and I thank you uh, Pam for. Uh, signing that and for um, being open to the sister city idea. I'm a, I'm a little skeptical of the sister city getting a more stringent oversight committee working on it. It, it, it has. Honestly, it feels to me like a way to stall or to prevent it from happening. And I, I want to believe that it, that you did this with goodwill. But I, I've gotten very skeptical about that sort of thing, just watching what our government and what our media does. To try to enable this genocide to continue. The genocide is continuing. There's been almost uh, a month. Where there was supposed to be a ceasefire, which Israel broke on the first day. They've killed over a thousand people within those three plus weeks. Um, they've also been killing people in um, Lebanon. They've, they bombed eight countries. Israel has bombed eight countries in the Middle East since this started and it's, it wasn't for the first time in many places. Um, they are trying to get their greater Israel and they're going for broke. And uh, we're going to be expected to foot the bill for that. We, we already paid eighteen billion dollars. For a year's worth of genocide in twenty-four and that doesn't count the four thousand or the four billion dollars that we. We uh, paid to Israel, which we do annually. In addition to that, we pay Egypt and we pay uh, Lebanon and. We, we pay these other states just to, just to hold back because their, their populations don't want this to be happening to the Palestinians. I watched a video this past couple of weeks, maybe it's been since the last meeting. Um, a fifty-five year old woman out picking olives. She has five kids or four kids. And there's a settler, an Israeli settler beating her with a club. She goes down. She's, she's already on the ground and bloody and unconscious and, and that settler continued to beat her. Um, there's a, a lawyer that works for the military in Israel. Who was a whistleblower and came out and, and leaked the, the footage of Israeli IDF. Uh, prison guards raping these Palestinian man who turns out never had any charges against him. Fifteen thousand of the people that were returned from prison in Israel had no charges against him. They're hostages. And this was the case before October seventh twenty-three. This is an evil state. This is a terrorist state.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, uh, how many people do we have on Zoom?
There are four hands raised on Zoom.
Uh, how many, I'm sorry?
Four.
Okay, we'll take our four speakers. Thank you.
Okay. Divas, please go ahead.
I was reading about the collaborators of nineteen forty-one, right before Germany exterminated the bulk of their millions. It just, I just cried myself to sleep last night. I don't know how you can do this. Try to demonize people trying to stop that and learn the lesson from that. It's a shame. It's a damn shame. Quote, "It's important to drill down on our preparation before we're in emergency," end quote. I heard that today in this meeting. Think it was about tsunamis. Well, we're in emergency now and we have been in one and we're facing further emergency. This Arcata City Council is complicit. I see homeless people being harassed, ticketed by police at the Arcata Plaza. Families are sleeping in their cars with their kids. I see ordinary people in places all over California and this country violently taken by armed masked men without any identification. Which are occupation tactics imported from Israel and that apartheid genocidal entity on the lands of Palestine. Today I read that the Center for Constitutional Rights, the United States has pulled yet out of a yet another human rights mechanism. Also that it can get away with upending civil rights protections, eliminating the social safety net for millions of people here. And criminalizing and torturing migrants right here. A journalist recently wrote, "This is a pilot program for eventually transferring people in the US to concentration camps." Again, this violence and societal breakdown is being facilitated by big tech surveillance and weapons. Tested on Palestinians by the apartheid Israeli regime, which is carrying out the ethnic cleansing and genocide there now with our US. Taxpayer dollars instead of it funding housing our people and making groceries affordable here in Arcata. This is what the public has warned you about, would happen if city council, including other governments flouted. Rather than seriously concerned itself to uphold US laws, international humanitarian laws. Social responsibility and or ethic clauses regarding US support for brutalizing genocide over there. The Lemkin Institute has already issued its warning for the US, warning of potential genocidal violence over here. What does Arcata City Council do? Selectively focus on laws for Zoom comments. For you, not for us. That's not okay. Black men are being lynched in this country again. Inertia won't stop this. There is no other way that the delicate human rights fabric, which protects us all from barbarism. Is held together but by every governmental actor vigilantly upholding these norms of civil society. The Arcata public keeps doing its part to sound the alarm and you're running interference for the dismantling of our protections instead. The ICJ ruled in twenty twenty-four, Israel's occupation is criminal, its settlements are as well. They must be dismantled and evacuated by the expired date of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Apartheid is a crime against humanity with only one mandate, under international law, that's to dissolve. You could have ran with those laws, but you didn't. You instead.
Thank you very much for your comments. Speaker number two, please.
Shannon, please go ahead.
Hi there, I just wanted to speak uh, out and just, I just hope that. The council has heard the public tonight and. I'm concerned that what was brought up about remitting our speech, um. When the lawyer went over all the reasons, there wasn't really many reasons. There was one instance where someone. Apparently called in after the fact and they said just one instance. And then they talked about destruction, but the disruptions that have happened have happened in person and not on Zoom. I've been to a meeting where there were, was an actual Zoom bomb and it was very uncomfortable. But you can have rules to deal with that and it's pretty easy to deal with. Um. I'm just concerned, where did this come from? Is this coming from some people on the city council who don't like what the public is saying? And want to silence the public and restrict our right to free speech? And are doing whatever they can and whatever power that they can to do that? That's my concern. That's what I'm questioning right now. Um, because. The email that Alex Tillman sent to my friend Ellen about access requirements. And having accessibility and, and just reasoning for why to keep the Zoom meeting was insane. I'm not sure if your lawyers have seen that email. Maybe you should take a look at that email. She's basically saying in that email that, yeah, this is because of Gaza. Too many people are calling up to talk about Gaza. You don't get to do that. The public, this is the public forum. The people can come and speak on whatever's on their mind. As long as they speak for two or three minutes around the rules, you can't just change the rules. You're a public servant. Act like it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be number three.
It looks like one hand dropped off, so we, we have one hand left to raise.
One, that'll be speaker number four then. So thank you.
Amy, please go ahead.
Hi, speaking again, Amy Scott. Um, I am speaking because I am. Trying to pass the word on that we have an amazing event happening this Saturday. Um, members of our um, local tribes have been working for the past years on. Um, developing a Native American Studies model curriculum. So anyone involved in education of youth. Um, the, there will be a model curriculum for, um, this is done with the California Department of Education. And so there's a huge event happening this Saturday that's celebrating the launch of it by um, Maggie Peters, who works for Humboldt County of Office. Office of Education. Um, the gathering is welcoming, I'm reading from the event thing. Um, educators, school staff, students, native and tribal families and community partners to collect, learn and share in the learning and celebration. I bring this up because again, um, we owe a huge debt to uh, the tribes that um. Have lived in this area since time immemorial and um, the least we can do is learn about uh, their histories. Uh, cultures, the, the revitalization that's happening with Yoracopa, Karuk, Weah folks in our areas. And um, it's from eight to three thirty. Um, you do have to register. I will make sure I send this along to the council. Um, but it's a really great opportunity to learn from great local tribal leaders. Um, and what's happening. And yes, I also support the Gaza sister city. Um, Palestinians are indigenous to Palestine. Um, settler colonialism, the same thing that tried to eradicate our local native populations is exactly what's happening in Palestine as well. And it would do us so well to learn from our history, to not repeat the atrocities and to learn how. We can better share the abundance of this planet with one another and again, come back to. Supporting and loving one another instead of this constant conflict in whatever way we can possibly be. If you have something to share, please do it. I know my youth that I work with every day are suffering, are struggling, have not gotten their SNAP benefits yet. Food pantries, limit the amount you can visit. I know we have a lot of resources here. Just really think about. What we can do every day to step up for one another and support one another. Cause no one is coming to save us. It's up to us to do that for each other. So. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Amy, can I ask you a question? I don't, I. Oh, you can. Sarah will talk about the event. Thank you, Amy.
Awesome. Thank you.
So that's the conclusion of the oral communications on Zoom. So we come back now to council reports and who would like to begin. Well, she didn't, she didn't say where it was.
It's at the Sequoia Conference Center at Humboldt County Office of Ed. Um, and yeah, it's a really cool resource. I attended two classes at Cal Poly Humboldt too, that were part of the development of it. It's really cool. They have some amazing lessons and it also includes uh, Native American Studies model curriculum, but also. Vietnamese-American and um, Hmong uh, lessons as well. So it's really cool. And it will be a really awesome celebration on Saturday. And then I guess my only other report. Actually, no, I don't really, no, I have nothing else to report.
Okay, well, go with you.
Sure. Um, I attended a cap and invest webinar through CivicWell and it's a. Main goal of cap and invest is a, it's a state program used to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by setting a limit or. A cap that decreases over time. And then investing their revenue generated by polluters into clean energy projects and community benefits. That's a very basic definition because I assure you it's complicated, but it's a good program. Um, so that was interesting to learn about. I also had my HCOG meeting. And the Indianola Undercrossing um, will be, um, the bridge part will be in use very soon. There's a great video on Instagram. If you go to the Caltrans one. Um, I assume it's probably on Facebook as well, but I saw it on Instagram and there's a video about the um, undercrossing and. Details about it. And then our board has also asked for an update from the uh, road use charge. Um, technical advisory committee. So that will be happening soon and when, um, when I know when that is, I will post that on my social media. So if folks are interested, they can watch that HCOG meeting. And um, some of us did attend a press conference uh, from Senator McGuire. Announcing several investments in Humboldt County for um, mental health, youth mental health services. Drug rehabilitation for different um, sites that will be coming onboard were discussed, which is great for our area. And I think one of the things that it, obviously getting the money for all that is wonderful, but. The thing that he said that I felt particularly heartwarming was when he said with a smile that Humboldt County has been like a dog. With a bone with this. And it was like there, the people that are in leadership in our. County have been working together for a very long time to make these things happen. And so I. Felt really proud of the folks in our community that are, are working on things to bring us resources to our area. That's all.
Thank you. So I'm going to go next and we'll just go right down the line. So I wanted to uh, announce that the Earth Center received its funding. And they're in the process of finding out to what their, what the amount of interest will be. And so it'll be finished um. And well, it's going to start next May and they figured it'll be done in a, less than a year. And that's where Humboldt Transit Authority will be on the ground floor and the front part of the building. And they're really looking forward to having that because that'll be the main bus, bus station area for um, Eureka for all the buses to go through. Um, we're also going to be getting the next ten hydrogen buses. They're going to start coming in. Um, we'll have them in the first part of the year. And um, since the new dorms have gone in at Cal Poly. The, they moved into putting into a large bus up there because they have, the ridership is tremendous. The number of people going back and forth. And so they find that is, they're wondering what it'll be like. Now, I think it's ten thousand people so far they've had get on and off the bus. Um, and then I would like to. See if we can do something about the cell tower discussion, if we can bring that forward at a council meeting. I'm also um, concerned about the Cal Poly uh, parking lot. That's been discussed a lot. We've gotten a lot of emails on that. I don't know where that stands. Maybe you have information?
We'll have a presentation on November nineteenth from Mike Fisher.
Okay, thank, that'll be good. And then I had people ask me about South Eye Street and what is going on. That's Little Lake. And there's like, I know that's a staging place and I assume it's still a staging place for the sewer treatment plant.
There's been some soil stock. There's been some soil stockpiles and remediation work done there, that's complete, so right now, the contractor has a little more earthwork to do before they demobilize from the site and spreading it, just to meet the final specifications for the remediation work there.
Yeah, I was, I was at the, for a art installation at Friends of the Arcata Marsh, or Friends of the Arcata, you know, and they, it was at AMCA, AM, the, I'm tired, but the American is, anyway, it's the Arcata Marsh Interpreter Center, and there were people concerned about what was going on in the property on I Street. So that's why I brought that up. Okay, Kimberly?
Thank you. So since our last council meeting, I attended Equity Arcata Advisory Committee meeting, as well as an events professional development monthly meeting, a subgroup. Today Comar de Comercio Humboldt held a successful and well-attended inaugural Latinx Business Summit. The mission of the Comar de Comercio Humboldt is to uplift Latinx economic prosperity by providing accessible education resources, robust networking opportunities, strategic partnerships, innovative thinking, and advocacy for entrepreneurship and future economic growth. The Hoopa Reservation is doing, I, I got to tend, I had an opportunity to attend the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, and so there was a lot of presentations from the Redwood Rise catalyst, and they talked about pre-development funds, in particular of interest was the, what the Hoopa Reservation is doing with tiny homes and equipping them with solar power, and also had a special presentation about the North Coast Resilient Food Systems Initiative and local various recipients, to include the North Coast growers. On the note of food security, I want to just remind folks that Kuna continues to do weekly Free Produce Days every Saturday, and if we have extra produce, we do it on Tuesday evenings at Weldon, so when people get off work, they can swing by, and we also have a free food pantry. If you can't come during our regular days, make a call, I'll make an appointment with you, and I'll get down there when you can be there. I want to remind everyone today again that today is the World Tsunami Awareness Day, and just want to share that message that tsunamis have no seasons, they can happen anytime and anywhere, and tsunamis do not discriminate, but some people are more at risk. Kuna continues to fight inequality for a resilient future, and to that end, everything that Kuna does is bilingual. And on the note, Kuna is gearing up for our one-year resilient hub anniversary celebration, and our third annual disaster preparedness block party, which is going to be not this Saturday, but next Saturday, November fifteenth, from noon to three, because it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So this event aims to strengthen local resilience by providing essential disaster preparedness skills with over a dozen organizations involved in disaster preparedness tabling, to include, of course, our very own special speaker, our own resident earthquake and tsunami expert, Lori Dangler, the Arcata Red Cross will be there, Humboldt Coad, which is the community organizations active in disasters, Tri-County Independent for Independent Living, Andrew Boger from the Blue Lake Rancheria Office of Emergency Services, Community Emergency Response Teams, Nuestro Comunidad, and a whole bunch more. So we'll be featuring live music by Safety Corridor Band, we'll have thousands of dollars of free go-bag supplies for disaster preparedness giveaways, as well as a free taquisa, so that's taco bar, it'll be catered by Los Guiles, and like always, all of our events are free, it's Kuna's gift to the community, I hope to see you there. And finally, Saturday, last Saturday, we had a successful humcart, which is Community and Animal Response Team Disaster Preparedness Training, because, you know, so many of us have pets, and, you know, we don't want to panic, you want to make sure that we have a plan for them, too. And almost forgot that Tabitha sent out a sales tax newsletter, second quarter twenty twenty-five, and of the top twenty-five producers, I'm proud to share that nearly half of the top businesses were in Valley West, and that's all I have.
Yeah, I haven't had any board meetings since the last meeting, but I do serve on the Access Humboldt Board, and it is very disturbing that they are losing their home, so hopefully we can find an alternative place for them to land, because they are valuable asset to the community. They're probably showing our meeting right now. There's Chamber Mixer tomorrow at the Coast Central on Gentoli. I'm not sure if it's before or after our next meeting, but there is a lot of seasonal events coming up from the Chamber as well, so just keep your eye out for those. I think that's all I have, thank you.
I'm going to just mention that Access Humboldt started over by the Judo Hut in Arcata, just for a piece of history, and we're adjourned. We have no closed sessions, meetings, and no closed session reports, and nothing to say about future meetings, we're adjourned.